Welcome to the San Bruno City Council Special Meeting, number of the 12th, 2024, when we have been called to order vocal comments.
Councilmember Allenz, here. Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Martin Medini?
Here.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Here.
Mayor Legal Medina?
Here. Thank you. We'll move on to item three, which is a study session at all.
Receive pay parking program update and conduct a study session to discuss potential adjustments.
Thank you. At this time, you will turn it over to your floor. Not a short one, so just be prepared. The chief will do that. I'll ask for questions from colleagues on the presentation, then we'll go to the members of the public. So if you need to leave, do that, and then we'll leave. Mayor, I was council. I apologize for the way I was trying to get this presentation up. Now, my name is Ryan Durant, and I am the chief of police here in the city of San Bruno. We're joined this evening by Nick McGarros, our administrative services director, in bringing you this pay parking program update and study session. In terms of our agenda this evening, I'll touch briefly on the objective of this particular presentation and study session. Talk a bit about the background and how we got here today. Then we'll have the bulk of the presentation will be in a discussion. As we previously discussed, I mean, we're waiting a six-month period to bring you some data points to inform the future of the program. This is that presentation. So during that discussion, I think we'll be mostly focused on data, including a fiscal picture from Nick McGarros. Then, of course, we'll accept questions, and we'll be soliciting some council feedback and direction for the future of the program, especially some specific areas. Our objective this evening is for you to receive the six-month update of a paid parking program and to conduct a study, conduct a study session regarding future direction. I have a brief section in this presentation on the background of the program in terms of all of the things that led up to us having a paid parking program in San Bruno and how that paid parking program ended up being designed and deployed. However, it will be brief this evening. In order to keep us on task towards future direction, there is a very expansive background section within the staff report. We'll set if this is so folks wishing to have a more in-depth picture of what happened to get us here can get it there in the staff report. In terms of the background we'll discuss here this evening, the purpose of the paid parking program is quite simple. It addressed severely impacted parking in and around our downtown area. We had well-documented parking occupancy rates in excess of 100% for years. This sometimes brings some scrutiny as people say, well, how can you have excess of 100% parking? This quite literally means periods of time in which every available parking stall in the downtown area was occupied and there were vehicles illegally parked, double parked in red zones, illegally parked too long in short-term zones because the parking situation in downtown was that bad for so long. We'll touch a bit on the history there in terms of how long this has been documented. The reality of that is that research tells us that the lack of available parking is the number one reason why consumer or hustling will not shop a given area. Paid parking, yes, can be a hindrance. People would prefer to have free parking, but the single greatest hindrance is if people cannot find a place to park, they will simply choose to go somewhere else. There were also a number of public safety concerns being considered at the time, mainly associated with double parking, pedestrian, and bicyclist safety. Those problems are exacerbated. Traffic is impacted and parking is impacted. This was well-studied and documented, as I previously mentioned. As far back as 2009, with the city's general plan, in 2013, with the transit corridors plan, in 2019, we broke the downtown parking management plan, San Mateo Avenue conceptual street state plan, and then in 2020, with the fiscal year 2021 city council strategic initiatives. In all of these venues, this impacted parking problem was thoroughly discussed and vetted. And in all of those reports, the need for a paid parking program was identified as the chief means of getting ourselves out of that problem. Just important to reiterate, seeing that that was the reason for the birth of this program, was the desire to fix this very long-term problem downtown. Why was paid parking identified as the solution? Well, paid parking has long been seen as one of the most effective means of influencing parking behavior. We had a situation downtown where parking, as previously stated, was severely impacted on the streets, and yet there was a lot of available parking going unused in the parking lots. And so paid parking is one means of changing that behavior and encouraging parkers to do things that are more conducive to a better parking situation in the area as a whole. Paid parking programs increase parking turnover, which is very, very important. Can drive shorter-term parkers, keep shorter-term parkers on the street, and drive longer-term parkers into the lots. Additionally, a paid parking program provides funding source for the critical enforcement that must be the backbone of a program of any kind of program. If you pass laws and don't enforce them, they tend to not respect it and obey it, therefore would not be able to adjust behaviors in policy. Very, very important, you will see this number recurring throughout my presentation this evening, is this 85% threshold. There is a great deal of research, academic and otherwise, in case studies on paid parking programs and parking problems in municipalities, and almost universally, they identify this 85% occupancy target as the balancing point at which the businesses and the customers benefit the most from a parking program. This means we want to shoot peak times for about 85% at the most of the available parking spaces being occupied at any given point in time. The idea there being that that means there's always some amount of parking available as people are arriving into the business area, looking for a place to park, conduct business, but it's not so low that the businesses are impacted by a lack of people in the area visiting. So this 85% is driven home throughout all of our documents supporting this program, and really is kind of the measuring stick by which we want to move forward with new policy direction. This is just an abbreviated development timeline. Again, there's a much expanded version of this in the actual staff report. But to paint a picture of what has occurred since early 2022, when the police department was assigned to pursue the paid parking program, which was paired with an effort to develop enhanced citywide parking enforcement. In March of 2022, the city council received its first report on the potential structure of the program we're discussing today. In November of that year, they received an updated report with info regarding the Parking Enterprise Fund and a LAS contract. LAS is our outsourced parking enforcement. In April of 2023, a few months later, you established Parking Enterprise Fund officially, and you authorized contracts with LAS and T2. T2 being the company identified to provide the kiosks, and we'll talk a bit more about that as we move forward the presentation. In September, there was another city council study session reviewing potential regulations for this program. In October of 2023, those regulations in the form of resolution and ordinance were in fact adopted by city councils. In January of '24, we began kiosk installation for paid parking downtown. In April, paid parking requirements took effect, meaning that people were required to begin paying to park in the paid parking area. And in May, we began actually enforcing that requirement, meaning that citations are being issued if you fail to pay to park. There was extensive public outreach, as has been previously documented at a number of these meetings. There is an expanded public outreach scheduled in the staff report for review. But these are some of the things that staff undertook throughout this entire process in an effort to do the best we could to make sure that the community, businesses, and residents alike knew what was coming, when it was coming, and how it was going to operate. This included multiple downtown town hall meetings with businesses. We created a parking enforcement information webpage and a paid parking information webpage. There were dozens of social media posts across all of the social media accounts of the city. We were sending flyers to area businesses and residences by hand. Numerous city managers emailed articles about this topic. Utility bill inserts were mailed out. A digital message board was deployed downtown prior to the program going live. There is a continuously running PSA on Channel 1. We delivered additional information to city council at public meetings on 11/23, 1/24, 4/24, and again last month in October of this year. So with that foundation being set, we can move forward into the discussion for this evening. The purpose of this staff report is to provide city council with an update on the parking program over these first six months, and we'll focus in three particular areas. Some of the challenges we've encountered, both expected and not during the six-month period, and how we are, have been, and are addressing those. We'll cover some data that we've collected as it relates to the program's effectiveness to date, so that it can inform your policy direction moving forward. And we'll talk about some of the potential program adjustments being considered actively by staff at this point in time. So again, reiterating this 85%, just because I think it should populate the remainder of our conversation, that this is what we're striving. We want to have policies, rate structures, enforcement postures, all that feed towards getting to 85% occupancy, because that's the angle of the program as a whole. At a high level, despite some significant growing pains, which we are about to discuss, again, some anticipated, some not, the program is effective in these first six months insofar as it is achieving this goal. There needs to be some adjustment over time, but for the most part, we have moved from 100% plus saturation of parking during peak hours to closer to the 85% we're already looking for. So let's talk about some of the challenges that we've encountered as we launched the program. The first, and by far the most prevalent, has been issues with kiosk malfunctions and inoperability. And this is kind of what I've begun to refer to as the power saga. And it is best described as such because it was apparent from the near start of the program that our kiosks were having power supply issues. And we were immediately on top of working on these issues with T2 to better to provide the kiosks. The problem is that each time we thought we identified in collaboration what the problem was with the power to the kiosks and deployed a solution, we would go through a testing period only to find we ended up back experiencing the same problem again. And so we troubleshoot and troubleshoot and troubleshoot. The high-level thing to take away from this meeting, while I will cover this in greater detail, is that this problem, we do believe, has been resolved. Only as of a couple of weeks ago, we came to the conclusion that some programming that was put on the controllers in the kiosks was faulty. This was causing the kiosks to never go into sleep mode. Kiosks run off battery power. They're recharged by solar panels. So those batteries were draining beyond the zero point to where they could not accept the new charge the next day. And so they were having continuous trouble rebooting. Even if they would turn on and boot, they lacked enough power to drive the communications needed to push through credit card transactions in many cases. This was the most prevalent reason. There are others. Why people experience a kiosk malfunction through the first few months of this program. And we do believe it to be resolved. The reasons that it took so long to get to that point, like I said, is because we kept identifying the wrong problems. We were first told the problem was that we covered the kiosks with black plastic while we were waiting to launch the program. This was done in an effort to not confuse the public and have them trying to use a kiosk that was not operational. But unfortunately, when they covered them, they covered the solar panels. And that meant the batteries received no charge for days or weeks and ended up completely worthless. So we replaced all of those batteries at the expense of T2 and went about trying to run the program. It took a few weeks to then come to realize that there were other problems with the power. Not the least of which was that some of these kiosks were put in the wrong place, which the city has some culpability in that decision. Solar panels are facing in the wrong direction. You see somewhere out charging for that particular reason. But the bottom line is that no matter what we did, with either of those or the other three or four potential problem identification stages we entered, none of it was going to solve the problem because the problem was the programming on the controllers and the machines. So we had to have, actually have T2 technicians out to reprogram every single one of the 83 deployed kiosks around town, one at a time, that has been completed, and we are currently in the process of replacing, again, at T2's expense, all of the batteries that went dead because the controllers were off-look. So we believe we have resolved this issue. I mean, time will tell for sure, but I think that most of the interoperability problems are power-related and appear to be resolved. Beyond that, we've had a lot of problems with operator error, and I don't mean a lot in terms of volume or percentage of transactions. Because as you see here, in a month of full operability, we're doing nearly 40,000 transactions through this system of people paying for parking. From those 40,000, we do monthly about 12 citation appeals or complaints where people say, I didn't, I got a ticket because the system didn't work properly, or I couldn't figure out how to use the system. Many of these are very simple operator errors that are not even necessarily their fault. For example, it's very difficult when looking at a California license plate to see the difference between a zero and an O. But if you enter an O instead of a zero for your license plate, and the enforcement crews go by with their license plate readers, it's going to believe that you have not paid for your car to park because you entered a different license plate than the readers picking up on every license plate. So in those cases, and there were quite a few of them, what we have done is dismissed the tickets even though they were issued wisely, informed the community member of what the error was, one is an O and one is a zero in their plate, or in some cases, there are other mistakes with transposing letters and numbers, and then just simply moving on and hoping to correct the problem. But there are a number of issues of operator error, and that's not even limited to quite so innocent situations. We've also had a lot of false reports and claims and even outright fraud. And this is also not terribly unusual. People do not like to get tickets, and so oftentimes, they will misrepresent whether or not they should have gotten a ticket. The challenge that this presents for us is that between the volume of cameras that now exist downtown, coupled with the backend databases attached to this parking program, pretty much every single transaction is tracked. And we have had a lot of people claiming that I tried to pay at the kiosk, but it didn't work, so I'm shopping, then I got a ticket, only to have video downtown reveal that they never approached the kiosk or attempted to pay at all. We've even had people falsify receipts for parking, claim that they paid and got a ticket, and it turned out they were actually taking an old receipt for payment, changing the date on it, and submitting it, saying, look, I shouldn't have gotten a ticket. So people are not being entirely honest with council when they're giving feedback about the program. As sort of painful and awkward as it is to mention it here, I thought it bears mentioning because there's been a significant volume of this occurring. In addition, we've got significant vandalism and sabotage. The vandalism, probably the most prevalent example, is we had a female suspect who was vandalizing a number of kiosks over the course of weeks downtown repeatedly, ended up damaging a few of them to the point that it had to be completely replaced. I want to emphasize here, that person has been identified, arrested, and charged with multiple felonies, and is facing time in prison for vandalizing parking kiosks. And so it's very, very important to understand that it's a serious crime. Kiosks are expensive and damaging to the point they can't be salvaged is a felony, plain and simple. But even on the lower level, we've had a lot of sabotage. And again, most of this is being captured on camera downtown. We have people who are repeatedly cramming foreign objects into the credit card reader to render the kiosks so that credit cards can't be read. People are shoving foreign coins and other items into the coin slots, and those don't work. I would presume the idea here is that, well, if the kiosk where I park isn't working, and I don't have to pay, and if I get a ticket, I'll say the kiosk wasn't working. But it's just important to know that we will be very shortly taking a zero tolerance policy to this type of behavior or conduct, and there will likely be more arrests and people charged with crimes if this doesn't stop. The point for this presentation is it creates significant downtime. About 50% of the downtime we experienced over a 90-day period was due to vandalism and sabotage machines. And so when we're trying to measure the effectiveness of a program, if we have somewhat tainted data because not all the machines are working, this is a big part of why. And finally, another challenge we've encountered is that we've got significant issues with LAS parking officers, especially when it comes to overzealous enforcement or accusations that they've been less than kind and polite with members of the community. I just want to say that as a police chief, I take this very, very seriously. We have been working with LAS since before they even officially came aboard in an attempt to help them understand that that's not how we operate in San Bruno. It's not how the police department operates. It's never been how we operate, and we will not have an outsourced that's operating that. So we are continuing to work through this with them. This has included having some personnel removed from their San Bruno posts when they don't acclimate to our way of doing things. Just know that we will keep working on this. I will say that one of the steps in resolving this has been to have them begin wearing body worn cameras. And this is a voice of caution for their community as well, because there are many times where there's been representative appeal that a LAS officer was rude, or overzealous, or unkind, or said things they shouldn't have said. And then we were to be body worn cameras only to watch a member of our community behaving in a far worse fashion than the enforcement officer was. And usually, their behavior is in response to being mistreated by the community, and that will not be tolerated. So we'll dive down some of the data as it relates to the program's effectiveness to date. This first slide just shows what research tells us is sort of the typical pattern of parking behavioral change when you deploy a program like this. Initially, you have your deployment, and people are not going to like it. We talked about this a number of times before we launched this program. Even if the program was perfect, which this one was not and is not, but even if it was, people do not like to have to start paying for something that's always been free. So there was never a point during a launch this program, and everyone was going to sort of come out of the woods to thank us for doing so. This is just sort of the natural product of this type of policy. The result of that is that some people will avoid the area issue. Typically, see occupancy park rates down a bit as people change their behavior and say, I'm not going downtown if I have to pay to park. And you'll see citations go up because people will park and say, I'm not going to pay in a little dice, and then they'll receive enforcement and get a ticket. At about the 60- to 90-day window, we start to see the sort of first change in behavior on this curve. And that typically is going to be a little bit more acceptance from folks, learning to use the system and realizing it's not quite so much of a hindrance. During this period, occupancy levels will tend to rise, citation levels will tend to decrease. And then you move into the 90- to 120-day period where behaviors tend to be more deliberate and modified. You sort of settle into a new normal. Occupancy rates will continue to rise, but will typically begin to level out. Citations will do the same. They'll rise because there's simply more people parking in the area, but then those will begin to level out as well. So these last couple of slides will show that even though we've had some significant pickups in the program, essentially, our program has followed the same basic current. This first chart shows average monthly occupancy on San Mateo Avenue since April of '24. It's important to note here that this is average monthly occupants. So when you look at some numbers, like at the beginning, where you maybe see a 70%, and I said we're striving for 85, well, the 85 we're striving for is really peak time parking. That's what we're trying to make sure there's available parking. So you're going to have hours where it's far lower than that. It's going to bring this average number down. But the important thing to look at for this slide simply is that curve, that what we're seeing is this sort of moderate increase in occupancy, followed by a pretty dramatic increase in occupancy, followed by a bit of a leveling more recently here in October. I'll also say that all of this is going to be a bit tainted by the poor uptime of the kiosks in the system. Very difficult to measure occupancy rates and people paying to a system that is not working as it should be. Now that it is, you're going to hear me suggest multiple times tonight, that even though it may be tempting to make policy changes now, it probably makes the most sense to see what happens through a few months of the kiosks operating properly, so that we have even better data to act on. This next shows total, or average purchases by month, total purchases by month, I'm sorry. You can see a very similar shape to the curve. Unfortunately, this chart begins in November, so you see a flat line for bidding. That's all before the program launched. But again, our program is basically following what most tend to follow when we launch. So this slide shows, I mentioned that in the staff report, that one thing data can show that's helpful is how, where, and when people are paying for parking, which can kind of tell us what parts of the program are being embraced, what are not. Maybe you can steer some of your policy decisions moving forward. So this slide shows the transaction data by area, and it's simply divided up into street parking, parking lot parking, and then separated out El Camino Real. This will become relevant later as we talk about maybe some potential policy shifts. But to note is that El Camino Real, while it's a fairly large area of paid parking with a lot of spaces, is currently accounting for less than 3% of the purchases being made for paid parking. So it's very underutilized. Almost all of the parking that you see here is occurring on the streets. I think this can tell us potentially a couple of things. One, the narrative that people will not park on the streets because parking is too expensive is not true. The parking is notably cheaper in the lots. It's currently $1.50 per hour on the street. It's currently 50 cents an hour in the lots. And yet, more than 60% of the parking is occurring on the street. So I think people's parking behaviors still are remaining about where they were before, where they prefer the street parking. It's more convenient, and we're becoming increasingly willing to pay to use it. This is a slide showing the cash versus credit transactions. I think 85% of transactions being via credit card is important to note. There's been a lot of talk about the coin slots not working properly. We have some installers are still in the process of installing on some of them these flaps. They're supposed to stop from repeated jams of the coin slots. But the reality is that a very small percentage of transactions are actually occurring that way because in the modern era, most people are going to prefer to simply back in their car or to use the mobile payout, and that's what we're seeing with data. And so then we'll talk a little bit about mobile pay versus kiosks. So, you know, 63% of the transactions are occurring via kiosks versus only 36% via the app. We're going to talk a little bit later about the potential need for a better app, and I think this data supports that need. A good mobile pay app is so much more convenient than a kiosk and so much more error-free that we should see these numbers reversed. But we're not, and it's probably because our mobile app is cumbersome, user interface is not particularly friendly, it doesn't store license plates or payment information, so you can easily pay next time. Those are some things that need to address. So now we'll talk about the key element here, which is parking occupancy data, because this really is what we talked about all along, having to drive our policy set. Want to be close to 85% during peak hours, so that with the overarching objective of the program, we need to overcome this impact in parking downtown and the need to drive to 85%, we need to know what percentages we're typically sitting at so that it can help you to inform staff and the policy shifts you'd like to see. This was the primary reason why staff requested a six-to-12-month evaluation period prior to making any changes to the program. And I want to acknowledge you that I know that's been exceedingly difficult for the public, as well as for you as electeds here in the public. It's very, very important. And we tainted some of that data because the system hasn't worked properly for that full six months. And you'll hear from the chief financial officer and see me as to how important that data is. Just know that we're grateful for the period you did give us, because I do think we have some data that's usable and helpful here. I will say the counts you're about to read, we actually did physical counts of vehicles parked as compared to available spaces. This is important because if we use the T2 data system, it's only showing us who's paying to park versus how many spaces are available. It doesn't necessarily show that someone may have paid for two hours, and they may have already left an hour into the parking. It doesn't show us that someone may have not paid in his park, or someone may have parked illegally. It doesn't show the number of handicap platforms being used to park because they're exempt from paid parking. So the physical count is the most effective method, and that's what we've attempted to bring to you this evening. So diving right into it, here is parking occupancy data on San Mateo Avenue for the weekdays for this six-month period. And what you'll note is that the red bars indicate periods of time where it is over the 85% occupancy. There is only one window where it approaches that dangerous 100%, which is what we really do want to avoid. The high levels basically tells you that from 4:00 in the afternoon until a little after 8:00, or somewhere between 8:00 and 10:00 in the evening, we are a little over that 85% occupancy rate at present. Again, I think it would be smart to see how that levels out, or if it levels out when the kiosk is fully functional, and give it some time, but this is what it's telling us right now. I broke out Saturdays and Sundays separately because there's been a lot of discussion on why we don't use Sundays, so I'm going to cover that a bit here. But here is the data for Saturdays. You can see from about noon until through until about 8:00 PM, we're running it over the 85% occupancy as well. And then there's Sundays, which look an awful lot like Saturdays. It starts a little bit later in the day. But from 2:00 until close to 8:00 in the evening, we are over the 80%, 85% occupancy rate as well. So when fully operational, these would be the types of periods of the day where I would say we probably need to consider increasing rates on the street in order to drive more parkers into the lots and get that occupancy rate down. Again, suggests this evening that we kind of wait that out and see what happens with the fully operational kiosks. I do want to highlight here that we have created the ability now, should we choose to change the rates at some point to affect this occupancy rate, if we can do it hour by hour, we do not need to do it for an entire day. So we don't need to increase the paying rate for all of weekdays simply to accommodate these, you know, six hours of time where things tend to be busy. We can go in and adjust dynamic pricing for just those times of day in an effort to stimulate. Another good factor to look at, or a piece of data to look at in terms of looking at occupancy is space turnover. There's a lot of talk about the importance of spaces turning over frequently after create available parking. And what this chart kind of shows, unfortunately, it shows a one-month period because that's what the system can churn out for me. I can't take an average necessarily over the entire six months, but this is pretty representable, typically see, which is a spike on the weekends. On Fridays and Saturdays, you see people tend to park and stay parked longer. So you get more of that of using the full two hours on the street before I'm leaving. But on weekdays, you see a great deal of interest in shorter-term parking. Kind of makes sense for running in and grabbing your cup of coffee, or running a quick errand, or dropping your kids at judo class. We're going to see these shorter-term parking options, and we'll talk a bit about how we've addressed that already. This slide talks about the impact of business programs, and I put this slide in here specifically because kind of in the final hour developing this program, there was a well-placed desire to minimize some of the impacts on the downtown businesses. a well-placed desire to minimize some of the impacts on the downtown businesses. That resulted in the development of a discounted parking program for downtown businesses. That equated to being able to discount up to two parking permits for each physical business address at up to one hundred percent or making them free. And then to also deploy the ability for those businesses to buy additional permits beyond the two for thirty dollars per month to park in the lots. Both of these guidelines are for lot parking only, not parking on the streets. So we did deploy that at the launch of this program, knowing that there would be a cost, quite frankly. And council expressed interest in saying, well, we want to start here at this very low level, minimize impacts. We understand that there may be the need for an increase at some point depending on those costs. So here, I'm just reporting to you what that data has been through the first six months. There are currently a hundred and fifty-nine of the one hundred percent discounted permits issued. This, the thirty dollars per month is approximately fifty percent discount off a full day rate to park in a lot, so off the cheapest rate. If the hundred and fifty-nine permits were paying that fifty percent discounted rate, it would make a difference of about fifty-seven thousand dollars per year in terms of the fiscal picture of this program. So we'll be reporting on the fiscal piece a bit later in the presentation, but just kind of keep in mind that you would ask about what the cost of the permits is, that this is roughly what the cost of that program has been. There are currently only about thirty of the thirty dollar a month permits issued, but it's important to note that those renew each month. So it ebbs and flows. There's been about three hundred and eighty of them issued over the span of these six months. So some of the potential program adjustments under consideration and some initial findings from staff. There's been a lot of talk of shorter paid parking increments. So initially, we launched where you had to buy at least an hour on San Mateo Avenue. You have to buy at least two hours in the lots. I think some of this, in my own opinion, was a bit of a dismantle discussion in that it wasn't so much that you're paying for, say, two hours in a lot, you're paying a rate for up to two hours in a lot. And this was largely to make sure that we could cover the transaction costs associated with processing credit cards. So we didn't want to make an hour more expensive, but we needed a higher transaction amount to cover those costs. And so this was a way of doing that. We also required at least an hour on the street. And about a month and a half into this program, we changed that. We deployed at the request of council members as well as much of the public, a seventy-five cents for twenty minutes option on the street for parking. And as you saw on the previous chart of turnover, it's pretty heavily utilized. So I would suggest that was a legitimate, significant interest of the community and probably a a wise move to create a shorter term option because we do want short term parkers on the street and it has been used as such. But there's also been an ask for shorter term parking in the lots. This is certainly something that council can get direction on. We'll talk about some of those items at the end. I will simply say that from a staff analysis perspective, it could be argued that doing so would be counter to one of the four objectives of the program, which is to encourage longer term parking in the lots and shorter term parking on the streets. Additionally, this could be cost prohibitive. Currently at fifty cents per hour is the per hour rate for parking lot parking. If you break that down, I don't know what transaction or what timeframe amount we could allow that would enable us to cover transaction fees. I would suggest if you don't increase the rate significantly, which we probably don't want to do at this point, you'll have a transaction that is so low that we'll be subsidizing that parking. We'll essentially be paying for people to park if people are not being paid. That will require a much more in-depth analysis from the fiscal side of the shop, should we provide that direction for a future meeting, but that's what we'll stand. Then there's the question of exempting holidays, and I think this is an easy one. Basically, I messed up. When we brought the ordinance to council, we only exempted, I think, four holidays in that ordinance. The intention all along was to mirror all city holidays and say that all of those are exempt, which is a more typical process. You should know that from the time the program launched, in practice, we did in fact exempt all city holidays. We've never used just the four holidays because we knew it was the intent to move in that direction. But it'd probably be a good idea to resolve the difference in the language in the resolution versus the policy at some point in climate. Unless there's other direction and council would like us to look at other ways of citing what's exempted. There's also been a lot of talk of exempting or reducing hours on Sundays. The argument being that most other cities do not charge for parking on Sundays and that there's an impact to what I believe are at least four areas of religious related businesses in the area. I will tell you that as you saw on the previous slide, if we're basing our decisions on data, this is one hundred percent not supporting my occupancy data. If the objective is to keep us at eighty-five percent, we are over that on Sundays and we should have the same policy on Sundays that we have the other six days of the week. Additionally, I would say that the idea of reducing or changing the hours on that particular day of the week creates a number of problems. One is signage. Very, very difficult to get all of the legal language that needs to be on the signs as it is now. If we have to stipulate that there are certain hours of enforcement on weekdays and Saturday and then different hours on Sunday, it can be challenging, but it would also mean a cost in terms of removing and recreating all of the signage that's been put downtown to properly indicate that. I also think that generally with these programs, the advice is to be as simple as possible so you don't create confusion in your customers. And customers not being sure if they do or do not have to pay and how the enforcement hours shift day to day is generally not advised. That being said, this is absolutely a policy decision on which we can accept correction from council. There's also been an interest in allowing for a paid ones and move about sort of a structure with the lots. Meaning that you can pay to park, stay in the lot behind Mexican produce, and then you can move your car to another city lot down at the north end of San Mateo Avenue and not have to pay to park. This can be done. There's a couple of things that have to happen for it to be done. First is that currently each parking lot in our parking system, database on the backend, is considered a zone. This A allows me to collect data of each individual lot so that if we want to variable pricing and change parking behaviors, we can actually know what's happening in each lot versus what's happening everywhere. But the second reason that this was a thoughtful is that in our own literature for these programs, repeatedly is encouraged what they refer to as a park once and walk strategy. And this is because the analytics show that a park once and walk strategy tends to encourage people to visit multiple vendors when they're visiting downtown, which drives the average ticket price of what they were spending while downtown up. This is not data that's been collected in San Bruno, but it's more case study data across the programs. And that's why I was suggesting ours if we're getting park once and walk strategy. Again, it can certainly be adjusted, but that's what staff has in terms of wanting to make that move here. There's also been some consideration for removing paid parking from some or even all of El Camino Real. I will say that as I showed in the previous slide, currently, El Camino is accounting for less than three percent of the transactions in the system, which should mean that the fiscal impact of such a change is relatively minimal. I don't mean to imply that it's not significant because the program is attempting to sustain itself financially. And we would need to give finance a period of time to do a more competent analysis of what reducing the number of kiosks would do to the fiscal picture. But at three percent, it certainly doesn't seem like it's cause for tremendous alarm. This has really come to our attention recently with the fact that we have some large apartment complexes going on, going in throughout the transit corridor there. And the idea here is that if these big complexes are not going to allow for very many residents to park in El Camino, but if none of them can park in El Camino because it's a two hour maximum and they have to pay, probably all going into the adjacent neighborhoods, which is going to further impact the adjacent neighborhoods already difficult parking scenarios. And so staff does think that it would be wise to begin studying the removal of some of all those kiosks to what the impacts of doing so would be. There's also been a lot of talk about creating more short term or green zones. It's been my contention from the start that this is not actually a request for more short term parking, we're a request for more free parking. And that's because as of date, you've not charged for use of green zones. But in every other jurisdiction we've studied that has green zones within a paid parking district, they do charge you to park. We originally did not because we had a one hour minimum and there was no real way to charge someone to park for twenty-four minutes. That is no longer true. And it's my contention that if we have eighty-five percent or less occupancy, that means there's always spots available. And if there's always spots available with the ability to pay only for twenty minutes, essentially have green zones all over the place there. That being said, there's also been an ask for maybe adding green zones into the parking lots as a short term option. I think I already spoke to the potential challenges of short term parking in the lots in terms of the cost of transactions and covering that cost. Additionally, if you're going to allow a short term option for green zones only, this can be very confusing for parkers as they show up at a kiosk and have to make sure they choose the green zone option or it won't give them the ability to pay for each twenty minutes. If they do choose a green zone option and pay to park, but they don't park in a green zone, they're likely to get a ticket, even though their view is unpaid for parking. So I think there's a lot of complexity there, but it is something staff can look into more thoroughly and can sort of bring back to council some point of desire. I already talked a little bit about seeking a better mobile pay application. Suffice it to say, we see this as important and staff has already begun the work of assessing some of the potential alternatives to what we're currently using. The current thing we're using is fairly inexpensive because it's tied to our existing programs. There's become apparent, there's probably a reason why it's quite inexpensive. So it's possible that, it's likely I should say that a new solution will mean an increased cost. But if it means better parking behaviors and our effectiveness in the program, we may well be worth it. Rate adjustments. So I think I've talked about this enough. Let's let's say that because you're over eighty-five percent in certain in certain times of day, this should be me coming to you as the administrator of the program and saying, we should be increasing rates during those windows of the day to steer behavior. However, I do believe again it would be smart to wait at least another thirty, sixty, ninety days, see what happens with the maximized uptime of kiosks, see if that behavior is still there, and then sort of test the appetite and thinking about rate adjusting at that point in time. This is not so much for council consideration, but more for informing you because I believe this is a city manager's discretion. But we are looking to move management of the program outside of the police department. The reality is it was never intended to reside in my department. The police department took this on after years of the program not kind of getting up off the ground because we possessed some skill sets and some resources to get it going and because it seemed like there was good overlap with enforcement, which was another piece of the puzzle. I think I think we've done that, albeit with some hiccups and some shortcomings because managing projects is not typically what a police department does. But I think the time is right for it to be moved outside of our purview. To be clear, I'm talking just about the infrastructure management, kiosks themselves and the program programmatic pieces there. Enforcement there should remain under the purview of the police department. We should be the ones managing the relationship with L A S and overseeing all of that. But it is likely that the programmatic side will be moving to public courts or the city manager's office in the immediate future. There's also the potential need for expanded service contract. So we do have a contract with L A S to provide minimal maintenance services to the kiosks themselves. Because of the power struggles I earlier, I talked about earlier, that lift has been far heavier than what is included in the service terms of that contract. And so the P D has had to fill out. I've had two full-time community service officers who are not doing anything besides monitoring the parking program for the last ninety plus days until this current solution with a power backup. So staff time has been excessive and it's possible we may need to expand the contract with L A S, which means more costs. I think again, it would be wise to sit and wait on this and see now that we've solved the main problem with kiosks, maybe the contract with L A S is enough to do what needs to be done. It certainly was believed to be initially if the kiosks weren't properly. But I do think that rather than putting out R F P or something for an increased service where they're going to base it on work that we maybe don't have to do anymore and best to wait. And finally, a need for enhanced wayfinding signage. We added a lot of signage downtown. It was regulatory in order to make sure the program was legal. But we did add a number of the sort of typical blue, big P parking signs or arrows, hoping to let people know there's additional parking in those lots because a lot of non-routine visitors downtown don't know that. But it's not enough. And we knew that going in that we wanted this to be part of a larger wayfinding signage project. I just wanted to drive home here that that is a completely separate project, albeit it has tie-ins to this program, that comes at a very significant cost that is not currently funded. Both in terms of staff time for assessment and analysis and determining what's best, and then in terms of project design, deployment, there's a lot of work to be done there. But I wanted to acknowledge that the public and all of you at one time or another have expressed significant concern about the wayfinding signage and need to get on top of that and that staff is well aware. So with that, you can stop listening to me for a short period of time and I will kick it over to our administrative services director.
Thank you, Chief John Henson. Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. My name is Zach Bagaros and the City's Administrative Services Director and Chief Financial Officer. And it's my pleasure this evening to give you a report out from the first several months of the program. So we're looking at a six month overview. And just given the way our finances are structured with our fiscal year beginning July one, those six months fall into two distinct fiscal years. For last fiscal year, which ended June thirty of twenty twenty-four, the books are closed and we had a deficit of just shot, just, just about under forty thousand dollars, point one four million. That is representative of roughly a quarter of operations. As the chief had mentioned earlier, that the revenue or the citation aspect of the program really didn't pick up until May. However, there were costs that occurred well before that. Some of the costs that weren't, that were not recorded, however, in this fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-four, was the allocation of staff to support the program. So all of the meetings, staff reports, community meetings, and troubleshooting program management that had occurred in preparation to launch the program. Those charges were not allocated to the fund, to the department fund, as well as the two, the two million dollar loan from the general fund. There was no repayment of that last fiscal year. So notwithstanding that the omission of some significant cost factors, the program still ordered a loss last fiscal year. For this fiscal year, we're operating again roughly on three months of data for this current fiscal year, which began July one. We're projecting a deficit by the year end of about a hundred eighty thousand dollars, point one eight million. This is based on the best data we have available, which as the chief has gone through in great detail, both in the written report as well as presentation. The data has been sort of inconsistent with respect to the, the availability of the kiosks, the timing of enforcement for citations. And so when we look at this data, I really am looking at the months that appear to be the most reliable by way of reflecting actual activity. And those are the May, June, July months. Normally, I would provide a presentation with financial data with such a, with dated information. However, in this particular scenario, we just don't have good data for the months where we experienced the changes with the kiosks. The data is there, but it's, I would consider it unreliable. The other thing to consider when we look at the fiscal year twenty-five forecast is that we really don't have a full year. We don't understand the seasonality of parking in the, in the, in the downtown area. Are there changes during the holidays, during the wet weather, during school vacations? We're not quite certain of that just yet. So again, if we look at the May, June, July, and we look at forecasts and projections, do want to make sure that there's an understanding that the forecast do not incorporate information on that level because it simply isn't available. One of the drivers of the deficit in the current fiscal year is that the adopted budget includes a repayment of the first year, a five-year repayment of the two million dollar loan from the general fund to the parking enterprise. They are two separate entities. We account for their finances independently. And so while we are all one city, we have a well over forty operating funds that work independently and we account for it distinct. The additional aspect of this driver of this deficit is an allocation of overhead. Typically, our standard allocation is somewhere on the low end, about ten percent, but it can go higher up to closer to twenty percent. In this particular projection, we're using eight percent. And I would feel that that's justifiable in the near term, however, it is in the high end that we do want to consider going forward. When we look at the end of the five-year forecast for this particular fund, I do want to highlight that there is a cumulative deficit anticipated by June thirty of twenty thirty of about one point seven six million dollars. There are a couple of ways to look at this. I think the first and most important is to consider that this one point seven six million dollars includes repayment of two million dollars to the general fund. And if we look at absence that loan repayment, we look at the eighty-five percent that the, that the chief has demonstrated as the objective of this program. The finances of this program are actually pretty darn close to where they need to be. It's still a deficit. But the driving the deficit here that you see is the repayment of the general fund loan, the repayment of the loan to the general fund, from the general fund to, from the defense general. I do want to highlight again that this is based on three months of data and it also assumes that there's a structural change to the program. There are changes in rates, there are changes in times, there are changes in activity going forward. So I'll start with the parking revenues. There are two major components. The first are First are parking fees and those you'll see here. The first bar that is shown is the fiscal year twenty-four actuals, which started about a hundred sixty thousand dollars. They increased in the in the projection for this fiscal year to about six hundred and sixty thousand. And we're assuming that those six, in order for those to change, we'd have to see significant changes in behavior or changes in how the program is structured. The second piece of revenue that is under parking citations. And you'll see that the parking citations are relatively small in fiscal year twenty-four, the last fiscal year. And then see a significant increase of fiscal year twenty-five. This again goes to be, this underscores the reality that enforcement or citation revenue wasn't in quite begin until May of twenty twenty-four. So in 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 fiscal year twenty-five, beginning in July, we have twelve months of citation revenue. The reason that we see the citation revenue declining over the five-year timeframe is that the citation revenues is intended to encourage defiance with the regulation. And so as folks become more more comfortable with programs and and some of the cancer are worked out. The citation revenue is expected to decrease and level off. That's what we have here as such. On the expenditure side, the expenditures are comprised of two main components. The first is the contract enforcement. You'll see that contract enforcement again is reflecting the facts of last fiscal year. We only had a couple of months and this year we have twelve months. There is an upward trend here. This is based on the contractual increases that are provided in our service agreements. The next largest component is our repayment of the loan to the general fund and equipment replacement for the for the program. And so what you have here is that we have a large yellow bar for five years and then that disappears in the last year. And then finally, we have two two other categories versus overhead or the allocation of staff resources to the program. And then the final other is primarily the bank charges for us or to collect. To the revenue and the expenditure in this graph, the you'll see which years are in our deficit years, which years are surplus years. In this regard, again, as I mentioned earlier, you'll see that the orange bar, which of the orange shaded area, the yellow shaded area. That is the loan. That removed or that reduced can can help to territory or help to bring the bring the fund into balance. And as you'll see, with the absence of of the loan fiscal year thirty, there's a small surplus. Did this the impact of these cumulatives of these of these deficits each year again, total of one point seven six million dollars, five-year term. So there are several financial considerations and I apologize for going into sort of the accounting speed here, fund accounting speed. But I but they are very important, given given some of the challenges that we've had in the past with enterprise funds and special revenue funds and the general fund. Right now, the funded the parking program that's set up as an enterprise, and as an enterprise fund, it's self-supporting. And it's a self-supporting fund, meaning that its revenues offset its expenditures and there's no general fund backstop. So if it loses money, it loses money and it needs to make that up through adjustments and other rates for reduction in expenditures in a subsequent period. The slide that the slides that I just went through clearly demonstrate that we're not sort of meeting that threshold. In order to maintain, as I mentioned earlier, in order to maintain the the enterprise fund status, we would need to adjust set rates. Part of that is I would very much like some high-quality data, which is, you know, multiple months, ideally twenty-four months starting in December. But of course, that is, you know, that's my wish list. Twelve months would give us some of that seasonality that I discussed earlier and help us understand and model and model better. But really, you know, ideally, two years would be a good basis to establish a rate structure. You know, the question is, can we can, from a policy perspective, can we wait that long? And that's a separate discussion. The other way to ensure that we're that we maintain the enterprise status is that we we stabilize our expenditures. So as as the chief mentioned, there are some maintenance, infrastructure maintenance costs transferring this function into another department of the city. That does have an expenditure that would need to be covered. Looking at the the overhead allocations, not fully understanding all of the needs of this program just yet made it a little difficult for us to allocate costs in order to how we allocate costs to the water fund or sewer fund. And that is a multi-multi-month analysis that really relies on the data that's collected. And so again, until we get good data, it's a little difficult to finalize the allocations. And then finally, understanding of ongoing capital. And and one of the items that chief mentioned earlier is the wayfinding expense. That capital, if that costs, if those costs will be incorporated or paid for by the enterprise fund. How do we make sure that we have enough money to to pay that for overtime? There are opportunities, of course, if we want to maintain the the self-supporting enterprise fund. The first would be, you know, revenue of the fee increases, just very roughly. The the math shows that about a sixty percent increase in the in the the fees, parking fees would balance budgets and generate a a small surplus. I am not recommending that tonight, recommending that we wait and collect more data. But I wanted to provide some context for what might help to address the deficit here. And then I think on the, as I mentioned earlier, on the big side of revenue is restructuring and determining how we're going to handle loan repayments to the general. The alternative, if we can't maintain our status as an enterprise fund, we would need to revisit the ordinance and recharacter, re-designate the parking fund from an enterprise fund, a self-supported enterprise fund, their special revenue fund. And as a special revenue fund, this gives us the ability to backstop the fund's deficits with general fund, with general transfers. It is, it 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 allows for us to more fully embrace the eighty-five percent. If the objective, the policy objective is eighty-five percent occupancy rate, that doesn't necessarily equate to full cost recovery, right? There's it's it's I don't want to put it in binary choices, not one or the other, but it's very difficult to achieve to achieve full cost recovery when we're when we're managing to a objective of eighty-five percent occupancy. And then finally, all of this plays into our long-term fiscal sustainability analysis. Clearly, if we transition to a special revenue fund, there will be a need for general fund money. And there's that's wholly a policy decision by the council. And we would want to work those estimates into our long-term financial planning as soon as possible, so that there are no surprises for your handling. So I'll hand it back to the chief for still hearing my.
Thank you, Nick. So just briefly, I think it's also important to note in terms of context for the physical picture, that much of this is by design. The the input from council as we came with options initially launched the program is to start at a point where we could basically hope to break even. And to be clear, those first initial meetings included no discussion of a loan repayment to the general fund. So it was deliberately structured in order to keep the impacts as low as possible, was an effort of not making a bunch of money on the program of breaking even, which is part of why I think that picture is where it's at now. So in terms of next steps, to be clear again, there's no action being requested this evening. This is a study session. But staff is seeking city council feedback and direction on at least these things, certainly others that perhaps you'd like to talk about. But the showmanship or intervals in the lots, advising on technical holidays, exempting or not Sundays, making all lots a single zone. Removal of some or all of the zones in uncommunities out, seeking an alternative mobile pay solution. Rate adjustments based on the occupancy rates and goals and a priority of enhancing wave running signage. This is certainly a slide I can bring back up, Mr. Mayor, when we get to the point where the council is providing feedback and that's all. With that, that concludes our presentation and you're happy to take questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation. People have sat through quite a bit. If are there any speakers who have not been turned in, can these be turned in now? If you wish to speak on this. Because once you say that's it, then that will be it. What I'm going to do to be respectful over these time, because you've sat here and may have to get home, work early in the morning, homework. Who knows? So what I'm going to do is have the public first go and speak and then we'll bring it back to council. So then if you do need to go, they're ready to answer. So we do that in seven spots meeting as well. So we want to make sure you're. So clerk, can you call a few up at a time? And when you hear your names, if you can line up behind the podium, just save save some time, please.
First speaker is Linda, followed by Carlos Martin, followed by Rebecca Malana, followed by Kimberly Corey.
Good evening, council. Nice to see everyone again. I apologize I'm a bit disheveled. I just want to start on a positive note and just thank the city manager for all the work that I've seen you and your staff doing. The rack is beautiful. The sentinel plaza is beautiful. Floor of hearts coming along. It's very noticeable. So thank you for that. With that said, I wanted to thank the council for hosting tonight's special meeting, just starting with the meters. They really haven't aligned with the community that we've organized in downtown since its inception. The meters were too expensive for a single timeframe allotment. They weren't for on Sundays. They were too late during the week. And to top it all off, many did not work at, many didn't work at its inception. We're not really a big city, so following what our neighbors do really does matter. We really shouldn't charge on Sundays. We shouldn't charge on holidays. We shouldn't charge past six and we should allow for fifteen-minute lockets. Before discussion is had on quote-unquote box revenue, let's remember that less than a year ago, there was no revenue at all. It should never have been budgeted and still should not be budgeted because the truth is we don't really know what's coming, especially with all the changes from last year. The city has so many opportunities to try new things and be the leader, but this is really one where we should have and still should just follow what our neighboring cities are and have found successful thus far. Two, there seems to be an intentional strategy to avoid the discussion on revenue generated from ticket citations. Even tonight's, tonight's packet only showed from two thousand twenty-four on. Even even though that's what it showed, two thousand twenty-four on, there was no comparison. So it's already understood that it'll take time to generate revenue from meters, but no discussion on the ticket citation revenue that we're making now that we didn't have before. The chief mentioned in a previous meeting that ticket citation revenue would expect to jump at least eighty percent before beginning to level off. Where is that eighty percent going? This council should be directing those funds to repay whatever is needed for the meters at this time. Future revenues from meters should be dedicated downtown. Chico has done this successfully. Pasadena has done this successfully and various cities around the country. Once again, it is not new. It has been successful in other cities. The council has the ability to make this corrective and should do so immediately before suggestions are made for other needs. Downtown is a top priority to this community in every single survey that we've seen in the last few years. Lastly, there was a lot of discussion at a recent meeting about whether people should be ticketed when the meters are not working. First, please ensure that all contractual obligations are being met and if they're not, that the contractor is being held accountable. Staff reported twenty percent of meters not working for a variety of reasons. Staff also said that while there is an option to pay, such as a QR code or a call call ability. At the last meeting, they said that the city has the quote-unquote right to ticket. Just because a city with a heart has the right to ticket does not mean that is the right thing to do. Again, think about the community that we have downtown. Think about the city's role as a parking program. And ask yourselves whether it is obvious how to pay for a meter. Is it clear? Is it considerate? Is it the right way to treat our community? Please go back to free holidays, free Sundays, free parking after six and to direct the citation revenues to payment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yeah, final slide, please. First, let everybody, no applause, no commentary, but can you please line up right after the next speaker, just so we can, I want to get everybody here.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. Congratulations on the winners and try harder for the losers next time. My name is Carlos Martin and I'm only one face here, but I really represent maybe more than a hundred faces that that for some reason they can't show up or they will not show up. They're afraid and they're afraid of you and they shouldn't be afraid of you. You, you work for us. You're supposed to be doing the right thing for us. And as I heard, you may be even willing to subsidize the party instead of making it free. And that's just not fair. Parking, all all in the city, they are all streets that we pay for in our taxes. They're our streets. We've already paid for them. You know, you're charging us again. And if if you make enough money, then you're going to do a shell game and move it around. If you don't make enough money, you're going to move it around and charge for mobile parking. And you can do that in five minutes. If you see a lot of people coming in, you're going to increase that rate. It's a money game and it shouldn't be. It should be for the public of San Bruno and all of those people that used to parking down there. The people that voted for it are people that live so far away, they're never going to go down there. We go down there, but I made it a point not to pay seventy-five cents. I will drive thirty minutes and spend two hours on gas, but I will not pay seventy-five cents on on parking that I shouldn't have to pay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, next speaker, please.
Hey, council. I have been talking about parking for over a year since I got here again. I really wanted to keep my comments positive and focus on merchants. But I'm sorry, I found the chief's presentation to be very offensive. Or the chief of police of our town to look at the council and say, don't consider all of the feedback from the community because they lie and they commit fraud, I think is offensive. And the entire tone of the presentation did not mention the effects on the merchant community, which I am a part of and I'm also representative of. As I had to literally start a merchants association because San Bruno has no economic development manager, no chamber of commerce. There's no support for small businesses here. Nowhere in that report did anybody mention the business owners. I have held multiple meetings and now I hold monthly meetings where we invite you council members to come and speak to the community, which the chief just asked me not to trust. And so the overarching problem here is a culture issue. The problem is not parking. The problem is not people from the airport. The problem is the culture of San Bruno. Like people have stated, this is supposed to be the city with a heart. And we are definitely not considering our business community and the people that live on the east side of San Bruno, which are primarily renters, people of color, lower-income people. And it's just very sad. It's sad to come into a a public meeting of our city council, which I've worked very hard to try to communicate with each of you. Some of you are very courteous and respond and others just deny and 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 decline our invitations. So as a businessperson of San Bruno, I beg that you bring the heart back into the city with a heart. Because in my short time here, I don't feel it. I hear every single day the pain and the suffering of the business owners. As you can see, I am personally rounding up these people to come here and show up, which some of them have left because they're so discouraged by these presentations and these words towards our community, saying that they're going to put people in jail and people are sabotaging. And people are upset. They're the point zero three percent, right? There's a lot of other people in this community that are good people, that are not liars, that are not committing fraud, that just want to support our downtown. And it just feels like the staff is making it harder and I don't understand why. This is a very easy fix. LAS is, LAS has been very cooperative lately with the merchants. And in our last meeting, we found that some of the issues with the LAS enforcement is that their directives are constantly changing from the police department. And again, I didn't want to throw anybody under the bus, but it seems to be a culture issue where we are not being regarded as business owners and the community and the people that paid to come down and paid to visit San Bruno and, you know, spend money in these businesses, we're just not being considered. So I'm begging you, Michael Salazar, I'm begging you, Regina, Marty, Tom, Sandy, please. and, you know, spend money in these businesses, we're just not being considered. So I'm begging you, Michael Salazar, I'm begging you, Rico Medina, Marty, Tom, Sandy, please. We need to bring the heart back into San Bruno. We need to be considering our community members and not calling them liars and fraudulent people and not telling our city council to not listen to us. We need to be heard. Please bring the heart back into the city as everything.
Thank you for your comments. And again, city clerk will mention a few names at a time, and if you can please line up uh, behind the podium, not in the seats, just to help it um, continue to flow. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kim. One time on barbecue restaurant, I just wanna say one point. I am against it. You want to collect money for a meter, but make it easy for people. I've been in business for seven and a half years. And I lost about fifteen, twenty percent business because a lot of seniors people is not coming anymore. And make it easy, like subsidy, bowling game, put a coin in, you know, I'm gonna be there for half an hour, they put forty fifty cent. Make it easy, easy, easy for for people to use the system. And I lost a lot of senior people. They're not coming. They don't know how to use a key assistor. And and go dash people come and pick it up. They don't want to pay seventy five cent. I ask them both, stay next to your car. I bring the boots. They don't make a lot of money. And why I have to make those people hot, hot life? Please, better than you guys. And if you want us to have successful business, please do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speakers.
Next speakers are Danielle Lee, followed by John Marshall.
Danielle Lee, I provide a few stores to the uh, a few store to the business owner. So I just wanted to mention about some of my experience here. Um, kiosks are not easy to operate. They're uh, they're very confusing. And a couple weeks ago, I was trying to put the money in and the screen is blank. So and then you have to wait for a couple minutes. I don't know, you have to wait for a couple seconds, but it's still blank. So it's not quite easy to operate. Um. And also there is no minimum option. If you want to pay your car, if you want to be just in a store for ten minutes, fifteen minutes, you have to put like one dollar or two dollars or and it's it's really, really bothering me. Isn't the money, it's just like, oh, why do I have to pay for two hours? Um, I saw a group of young people, about three people. Um, they are about three years old. Three people looking at the kiosks and you are there for like ten minutes. I'm pretty sure they're trying to figure out what is going on. To talk to to parking enforcement staff. I said that why is that, why is that this uh, these kiosks are so difficult to operate? And they even agree with, agree with me that yes, it's pretty complicated. Anyway, so I know that you guys already signed, signed the agreement, um, where the kiosks operate them. So in the future, if you renew or find another kiosk uh, vendor, you guys may want to put a how do you call this one? Wow. Why send props, meaning if if the system is not good and it's very difficult to operate, then the city attorney and the city manager have the kind of power to cancel it outright or something to that effect. And up to eight P M requirement for the parking is pretty annoying. And uh. Yeah, I think most of all is just complicated. They're not quite easy to operate. And now I would like to congratulate those uh, Neil and uh, and the city council member that you won your, you won your, your election. And to the chief, and thank you very much for your service. Thank you very much for the service to serving the city. And everybody, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Uh, John Marshall, resident of San Bruno on the open and reup. Uh, I I kinda have to agree. I didn't really wanna go there, but I I think it's, it should be identified. Just feeling the same thing, like I said. The the presentation the chief brought was very articulate, very nicely said, well rehearsed. Maybe all understood it. But when you read between the lines, it was quite insulting. Um, I had an opportunity to sit with the chief and city manager some eight months ago. And um, question meeting, sat down, spoke for almost exactly one hour. There wasn't one comment made. Uh, there was a promise paid to get back to me uh, in six weeks or so. It's a little bit surprising, we not time to pay to get back to me in six weeks, and now it's been eight months and I still haven't heard back. Bottom line here is, the company that was hired to install these meters, uh, these kiosks was completely and totally incompetent. The basics were not paid attention to. This is the kiosk installation company, sounds like to me. And as simple as putting solar powered kiosks in the shade just proves incompetence here. I can't imagine that I would go down and spend all this money. It's a lot of money for a fee. Can't imagine that I have a company that will go down and install kiosks that aren't programmed properly, put in the wrong spots, and put inside the shade. So I think that should be looked at. I think they should all be ripped out, and I think we should get a competent company. We're gonna move forward and keep these six building. I really like the idea of putting a quarter of a machine. That makes things simple. I too, I guess I'm a senior now, and I have a hard time with that uh, that machine downtown. There was once a time when my wife and I, we had to park on the El Camino because there was nowhere to park my truck with a trailer ride. We couldn't get the the machine to operate. Couldn't do it, not one way or another. It did not work. We called the police department, because we were told to call the police department, a special individual. It was an hour and forty eight minutes after we called that I got a phone call back, wondering if it was all right. Well, I was already gone. I mean, we were leaving the occasion. We were done. Another major concern I have is we've got this new building going in where LA Toyota is. And we're gonna have about four hundred cars with how many parking spots? Maybe someone can help me out. I think we've got like seventeen parking spots. Uh, I I used to live on Presswood Drive, and I remember watching the people hike almost a half mile parking at a density housing, Crystal Springs Terrace Apartments, and they would have two and three cars. They would park a half mile or more up the road. So what's gonna happen now is a building that we've had for sixty five years and our family is gonna be impacted by that. So I'm not even looking to get meters, the the kiosk removed, or the paid parking removed. I think that every resident should be able to have a parking permit without paying for it. Thank you. I guess I'm up. Thank you. Done.
Thank you for your comments.
I have no other speaker, Chris.
Okay, last, call for any speakers. Alright, so now I'm gonna bring it to the, to the council uh, for maybe this question. I I apologize for the pause. There was uh, we've had several speakers that said um, had question statements. Is there anything uh, chief, that you might wanna address or?
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd just like to clarify that there is nothing in what I've said this evening that was intended to suggest that the council should not listen to or care about what the community has to say about the program. Uh, quite the contrary, the input from the business community and the residents is very important. My statements about some of the fraud and dishonesty occurring was simply a matter of fact to make sure that you all are aware that there have been numerous times where there's been a communication forwarded to the police department by way of the council that ended up being completely erroneous and not true. There are also many of those complaints that are absolutely true. Certainly that any of it pertain to the kiosks not turning on, not working properly, as I said this evening, is completely valid. Took far too long to resolve the issues, but but nonetheless invalid. Simply that some of them are not, especially when it tends to relate to the claim that I used the system, I paid to park, and I got a ticket anywhere. The API that you use in the system is quite simplistic. You enter a plate, cross reference that plate against the citation software. I'm not allowed a citation to be issued for not paying to park if your plate is in the system. So the plate's not in the system. Many times, again, operator error, completely innocent. But far more times than I for one am comfortable with, that it's it's less uh, honest and genuine. The other thing I'll comment on is the uh, Laz directives changing. The only directives that have changed with Laz relate to attempting to temper overzealous enforcement, hard stop. There has been no changing of what we directed Laz to do in terms of their contract and their enforcement from the beginning, but we've gotten to the point where for example, Laz enforcement officers decided one day to go all about the entire city and issue tickets for people parking in hashed out areas of private parking lots. That this is not something we want Laz doing. It angered a lot of people. It's not necessary. Secondly, they've taken to the habit of sitting on the avenue, watching people park, and if they appear to walk away without going to a kiosk, immediately issuing a ticket without checking the system to determine that person is attempting or has attempted to pay. So did we redirect that directive? Absolutely. They're supposed to using license plate readers and giving a period of time for people to pay for their parking. Uh, but there has been no repeated redirection of the Laz enforcement officers over time. The kiosks in the shade issue, completely valid. I will say that it is a minimal number of kiosks. To be precise, it is three that were misplaced. That is actually not on the installation company, but on the contractor that told that installation company where to put those kiosks. They were supposed to do solar evaluation of those locations. They did happen, but there were apparently three that were put in places that they didn't belong. Uh, finally regarding ticketing, um, when kiosks turn off working, uh, this is a bit of a more difficult thing to explain because I I don't know what was said previously, I think, by the captain about the city having the right to ticket. The the real issue here is whether or not there's a reasonable payment option in a reasonable vicinity. These kiosks, to the point of error, are placed far more frequently than is required by law, deliberately in effort to accommodate our residents. And if a kiosk is down directly next to the car, but on that same block, there are two or three kiosks working, yes, the expectation is that you will pay for parking or you can receive a ticket. However, when we had rampant vandalism and countless kiosks went down at once, we did not conduct enforcement of those areas. And if Laz conducted enforcement where it should not have been conducted, we were immediately dismissing those citations upon them. So hopefully that provides some clarification on some of the things that were were on.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, so I'm gonna bring it to council, and I know there were next steps, um, on the slide forty two that I showed, uh, but there might be a lot. So we're gonna start, but see how far, if I take a pause, uh, send that in the wall. So. So is there anything you guys thought, sorry?
I mean, well, I have a question on this presentation. Um, this, um, sorry, this in the this, your your section, the um, thank you for giving us the the financial picture. I know it's difficult. It's difficult. This is physical. Um, but the on slide, I think it's thirty nine, where we talk about the apartment fund expenditures and it's very good, there is, you was mentioning about those things. The the slide says the best for loan repayment and a visit. And all there goes away after twenty, after just like your uh, thirty.
Obviously, the loan repayment goes away.
That's something that's gonna continually improve activity, I would imagine. Um, so I just wanted to kind of exchange our percentage of that, that is is actual improvement.
Sure. Um, so the permit is uh, is new, and uh, the depreciation statement we were saying is five years. And so it would fully depreciate, and then five years when we actually do the replacements may not be for another six or seven years. So the tax management is not actually going to depreciate like a percentage at all. Any other questions on the presentation?
Just to follow up on council, it's kind of exciting. There's some questions about what happens to the equipment. So if we stop allocating money for equipment replacement, then that basically means lending for this and for sixty, seventy years after that. There's no revenue to replace it.
So the funds will be there to replace the equipment in seven years, right? We will build up that accounts uh, for five years. It will be there, and then uh, when we actually do replace them, we restart the uh, reserve again. We, right now, we don't know how long these these items will last. These are very disturbing.
So just like if you restructure the loan thing, we could also restructure how much we're putting away this year because we do have a long time to to fund that, which is correct.
Thank you. And then I do want to, since we're talking about the finances, I just do wanna add that the, in the, in the slide that had the revenue uh, discussion, it shows the citation revenue that is that one that is attributed to this just specific program. And so the citation revenue that is generated by this program is going into the parking fund. It's not quick to finish or close.
Questions at this time on the presentation? Which we are council member all of us.
Thank you, Senator. Would it be more ideal to make a fee modification on the kiosks rather than replacing them? Like make it simple as what we're repubg.
Anything on the bottom here we're discussing replacing kiosks? Um, the changes to the interface on the front of the kiosk. Uh, we have made a number of those during this six month period, some of them just language based to try to clean things up, make it easier to understand, but some in terms of creating the new rate, for example, seventy five cents for twenty minutes. Um, but I don't think there's any discussion of the need to eliminate the kiosks. To be clear, when we brought this to council, there were two vendors that can meet the needs of the asks for the kiosks. Uh, one was McKay, the other was T two. McKay was roughly five times as expensive as T two, and that was a big part of why the decision making over T two. There's not exactly a litany of other options, I'm saying.
Questions, I'm going to present to your customer, Medina.
Um, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, page twenty four of the presentation, chief. Wanted a clarification on parking data is the laws or streaming?
Are you talking about occupancy?
Yes, all streaming. That's all street, so it doesn't include any of the laws.
Correct.
Thank you. Just as we're getting close to seven, uh, council may have some other thoughts in the direction. I don't know how much longer, but uh, just for those viewing, we're gonna continue with the special meeting, so we're gonna go into the seven o'clock hour. So uh, but I will, I know other people are here to to speak, so I will make sure we we don't just sit up here and talk all night, so that, for this, uh, as we just finish our study session. Uh, now, any comments and, um, Mr. Medina?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this meeting is a long time. And what we know now is a lot more than when we first started the project. There is not enough time or data to effectively make the the best decision tonight for everyone involved. So I'm suggesting, suggesting the creation of an ad hoc subcommittee to continue to work with staff to review the options listed in the presentation this evening. Um, so that that's um, my suggestion, um, to mayor with the hour and the um, time that we got spent so far. I think this could go on for a while.
Thank you. Any other thoughts or comments, next steps or what we refer to see the council members?
So I I would support the creation of an alone committee so we can get these things to be flowing. I I would like us to go through the bullets if possible to to, you know, see where we, see where we could agree and perhaps provide some direction as a full council. So I also, I agree that it's gonna get into, it's gonna get into a higher level of detail, probably have um, a subcommittee can get into better training of staff. But I would, I would like to see us go through each of the bullets on that one, and then us all talk about it, move on to the next one.
Well, that that will take some time, actually. There's eight bullet points. If you wanted to commentary or thoughts from each of you.
So that's right. I think it's a little bit, the priority of enhanced way of planning, you talked about that before. Everybody knows if we wanna do it, and it's gonna be the next you're expected, so there's, that's probably we'll just go do that way. But um, some of the other, some of the other problems, um, we don't think Sunday's gonna work, so. Sure, it's okay. We need to do it, we need to assess as a whole council.
Yeah, I'm also saying there's a lot of data and stuff.
Yeah, I'm also saying there's a lot of data and stuff too, and, uh, Councilman Medina had the ad hoc committee in order to dive down with staff in order to, just, to me, have we digested everything? I'll be ready, or do we need, uh, folks to continue to work with staff, not continue, but work with staff, staff done the work to dive in deeper? Because like when Chief said about Sundays, do, about the hours you're, costs, it does say in the resolution, four days, but we know that that's not a freeze, that guy come back, and we, there's, well, just the holidays to me, I'm just, yeah, man. I mean, it's during, I guess I remember the colleagues, they said, oh my gosh, July, worst July, I was, I was nervous, because it wasn't in the resolution, we lost it.
Please, Mayor, can you suggest that maybe everybody just take a turn looking at the slide, if there's items on there that they keep on pursuing, just bring those out, see if we can agree. If it wouldn't do that for you.
We've been kind of deep in, straight through, right? We've all committed to that. Uh, first of all, uh, we have, uh, next steps are one is no action, and second is the staff. Staff is seeking city council feedback and direction on. First one, shorter intervals in parking.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, rather than read through the list, I was just thinking, everybody get a turn. If there's an item on the list that they want to bring forward, it's just, just, all right, I believe, speak, speak about it.
Okay. I will, okay, thank you.
So, um, thank you. So, uh, regarding the exempted holidays, thank you for clarifying, uh, the, the full list of holidays, it's not, um, not in the ordinance, but it's being, it's being, uh, in practice. One thing that I think, and hopefully it's easy, easy software, um, update, would be to, on holidays and after hours, be displayed immediately on the screen, the parking screen right now. Because the way that it works now is you have to get through every step, until you get to the pay screen, and then it tells you it's free. So I've already put in my, I've already done all of the, the tedious work, the difficult work of, of getting my license plate in there and all that, and then it tells me it's free. And we just got, I think you received feedback on social media yesterday, um, on the transaid, that that was, that was mine, and extending that, it also would be good, uh, after eight, after eight P M, same thing, considering that was after eight P M, like, before the, before the youths go to sleep, um, they'll still, it looks like you have to pay until you get to the pay screen and then it tells you that you don't have to pay a little more. So that's the first one. Should I keep going, or?
Yeah.
Yes, please. Um, regarding exempting Sundays, I, I get it. It is, so I'm gonna do the same comment for, for Sundays and extending from, uh, to eight to eight o'clock instead of six. I completely understand that other cities have free parking at those times. The data we saw in the presentation shows that, that those are times when things are the busiest in our town. You know, if, if majority of council wants to, you know, uh, cut off, pay parking at six o'clock, I'll, I'll roll along with it, but I'm really, really worried that we're gonna make it really difficult for people to go out to dinner. Um, so I just wanted to make that, 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 um, that statement. The, for shorter, shorter intervals in the parking lots, the, the staff report went into a lot of really good detail about why that doesn't physically work. Um, because the, the part, the, uh, the, the rate in the lots is already really cheap, it's fifty cents for an hour. Um, it's, and so it's a perception thing where, you know, we've talked about this a lot, why am I paying for two hours? Um, if I'm only gonna be here for, for fifteen minutes? Um, it's because it's really difficult to fill up the quarter. That's, that, that's why. I would like to see us try to figure out if there was a way that we could make it, um, you know, if there's a feasible way to make it easy for folks to be able to just drop a quarter in for, for fifteen minutes. I'm in, in favor of free parking, and I do think that we should, should be, um, charging for the, for the green zones, um, um, everywhere, but, you know, perhaps, you know, if we're gonna remove some, um, some of the, um, the kiosks from some of, some other places, maybe we paint a green one, put it right in, right in the narrative, or just like a, a pod of green spaces, then you're market. Um, and you pay with this one for these, for these spaces, and pay the whole thing green. You know, there, there's, there's things I think we can, that we can do to try to make it, uh, easy for folks. So yeah, you have to pay a quarter. If you don't pay with your credit card, then might as well park one of your spaces, because you have to pay the full price. And then regarding El Camino, uh, I, you know, there's one block in El Camino at the very south where there's, there's, um, new sushi restaurants, there's a dojo, the, having paid parking in that lot makes sense. All the rest of the blocks to the north of that, it makes no sense. Um, and so I'm, I, this doesn't have to be at all of that big thing, so I would recommend removing the, removing the, the kiosks from all the blocks north of the, north of San Antonio. And, uh, absolutely in favor of, uh, seeking an alternative to the, to the mobile pay solution, keep calling it an app. I said in my comments that I, that I said in advance, it's a little disappointing, I was one more to say comments in advance. But, um, the, uh, that we keep calling it an app, but it's not, it's a, it's a mobile website, and if there was an app that it would have, it was a feature, but because it's a mobile website, yeah. So it's, it's difficult to initiate the, the transaction, that's what makes it much more difficult for our older folks and their lovers. So, uh, I think I will stop there.
I'm trying to take notes, but I think the chief is also assisting me, so.
Oh, yeah, please, sir. Right, uh, I think I agree with a lot of what Councilman Medina said, uh, lots of his points, you know. I didn't submit any questions because we all had our one, I didn't answer most, got most of my questions answered ahead of time. Um, but, uh, I think this all aligns with a lot of what we're talking about for a long, so the shorter intervals, uh, data doesn't seem to, they, they would need that. Uh, definitely want to match ordinance to holidays, and that's what we're doing anyway. exempting Sundays, that's something I brought up when we first rolled this out, data again showed that it wasn't, that that was contrary to what we were trying to accomplish, so I would say we can change that. Um, as far as a, a single zone, uh, that doesn't really make sense to me either. If you go to any other city, where you have to pay for a spot, and you put your spot in there, you don't get to move around, so I don't see that help. Our system is much different from that, so I don't think that's necessary. Um, El Camino, I think, requires, uh, a little more discussion, and as we start being more, there, I think that's a discussion we should have in the future, but, uh, for now, being that we're falling short on revenue, I think eliminating those meters would definitely help us in any way. The, the alternative to the mobile pay, I hundred percent agree with that, it's just only, I mean, it's not working, and, uh, um, the rate adjustments, I think we're, you know, that's not something we're gonna have to do anytime soon, and so the other, that won't make sense, seeing that we're, uh, even exceeding our eighty-five percent goal. Uh, makes me feel better about the fact that people are willing to pay what we're currently charging, and so we can, can, can overline there, especially since we started at the lower end of our range. And then, uh, the, the way you're finding it, I think it's coming anyway, so it doesn't, it's,
Thank you, Senator. Um, I agree pretty much with what, um, Mayor, um, Vice Mayor Zalzner mentioned. Um, I do, uh, think that, I agree with the presentation that I think we should keep the, um, the parking laws as it is right now, as because the intention is to, uh, bring the, um, the, the hard bricks to the, the parking lot. And if they need a shorter, shorter term, um, they can use the, the on-street. And I think we should just need to have more discipline in line with the, the, the community accept that. Um, I agree on the, it's, uh, Sunday exceptions, and, uh, thank you for bringing, uh, updating, uh, updating the holiday as well, that. Um, and, um, on El Camino, I think we should, um, have more discussion on what to remove and what to keep, uh, correspond on the, uh, um, uh, public commercials, um, speech, and I think I agree with that, when we have the, um, the, uh, the housing, uh, building open. Um, and also for the seeking alternative to mobile pay, I agree with that. I, I hear a lot of, of positive feedback on, on mobile app. And, uh, on, uh, wait, Randy, and I'm glad to hear that we are addressing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Medina.
So, thank you, um. I look forward to, um, discussing this in further detail, definitely, but the reliance on an eighty-five percent occupancy should not be the only consideration for where parking meters, uh, are to be placed. I, so I'm in favor of the shorter timing intervals, um, exempted holidays, examining Sundays, um, single zones, I think there could be a software solution to that. Um, the, I believe, I haven't checked it, just to the attorney, if I can comment on, El Camino, since I was recused from voting for El Camino.
You are, you, you are able to, you know, recuse a prior action that wasn't relating to establishing the ordinance, and there is an exception that allows you to stay in discussions related to the ordinance established.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. I want to make sure I'm not gonna get in trouble. Um, so we definitely need to look at that, um, if it's only, um, getting three percent of the transactions, it may not be worth it, and then you go by seeing those additional kiosks as backups to be swapped in as needed, and also looking at other locations, other city parking lots that we do have in our possession currently, um, to see how they can be placed elsewhere. Um, definitely seeking an alternative to the mobile pay solution. We also, um, did receive a present, um, I read comment from, uh, Lady Wiper that may be able to provide a solution of a layer on top of what we're currently, uh, seeing, uh, right now. Um, the rate adjustments, uh, we can get to that, and then, uh, definitely, uh, you've been talking about late night signage for a couple of years, and we didn't, we didn't, uh, thank you.
So I had a couple others, I, I apologize. Um, I, I would like to see us look more closely at the, at the data for weekdays between eight A M. and ten A M. Um, it seems like it would be, you know, that's, that's a, uh, period where many of the businesses on the avenue were not open. Um, and it seems, uh, then with the excessive cost to charge for parking and pay for reinforcement during that time, so I, I'd like to see, um, some, some focus data on occupancy during that period, because maybe we can, if we, uh, uh, don't enforce until, you know, don't, uh, enforce until ten, then, um, then we'll get a little bit more, uh, you know, ease for the, for, for the, the few public who are going down there, and we'd be able to reduce our, uh, our costs for LAS, because that would be two less hours, but, um, enforcement. Last comment was one that was part of my, um, there's, what I sent in advance, which was, uh, this was from the city attorney and, and, and perhaps the, the finance director, how can, how is it possible for us to recover all the part of the enormous cost we've expended, it's expanded its staff time in dealing with the technical issues that, that the chief went, went through with the kiosks? That turned out to be a software issue, it was really out of our control, and the system has totally been warranty. We spent, I mean, I, I shudder to think how many hours of staff time spent chasing our tails on that particular issue, and it turned out to be something, you know, buried in the, in the kiosks that were, throughout. So considering that this, this system is under warranty, I'd like to, us to at least look into if there's any, if you can get any kind of cost recovery, back from that. Thank you.
Good, thank you. I'll turn it, we'll, we'll check, uh, wayfinding side, before you can talk about that. The eight to ten, I go down San Antonio, probably about seven thirty or eight every morning, a little bit after, and it is rather sparse, shall we say, as far as parking, so that, that idea intrigues me just a little bit to see, uh, the, some of the El Camino parking, uh, kiosks, I agree with, I think those could be utilized and used to reserve. Um, the holiday, we'd like to see the, uh, resolution brought back to update, uh, the accuracy. June teens also was a date that came up because other jurisdictions have, have a holiday, so we'd like to see us get on one, solid white page. The app is something I'd like to, uh, have looked into, and I, I would say keep, so the other office, uh, I have said, say. Okay? Okay, next one, I do. We got you, right? Um, okay, I think I'm gonna give, have the council take a, like, five-minute break, uh, and then we'll need to, you know, come back. So I'm going to return this special meeting to the next regular meeting of November the twelfth. This, well, which is after.
Right, I, if I need to make a motion, uh, to set up a subdivision to help iron out some of these speed goals, because this is the law.
Well, right. Do you, it is, I, thank you, Chris. I think we've got, I think it's been focused for staff to, we've narrowed it down, and I think it gives directions. Chief, do you feel you have enough, or do you need? Need to know all of that, and you have it somewhere.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I think I certainly have clear direction on the items that staff requested council feedback and direction on, uh, at this one.
Okay, so I, I would prefer to have staff, but if you want to, uh, uh, bring it back, or, uh, what have you, City Attorney?
Man, Nina, Councilman Medina, I was just gonna discuss that, to state that, um, in your policies and procedures, to set up an ad hoc committee, you have to have it on, which I got. And so if you were to talk about that, it would be to request that it show up on a future agenda.
I would go ahead and do that, if I, if I have just one more minute, Mr. Mayor. There are, parking's already tough right now in our downtown. We have four new businesses that are hopefully in open, so a restaurant at Costa's, it's a large location. There is a Brazilian bakery that's opening by the end of this month. There's a piece, pizza shop that is on the corner block that is waiting to be opened as well. And there's a brand new pharmacy, um, waiting to open. I, I, I was able to talk to, uh, the contractors in there today. So it's just gonna get, the demand is just gonna be higher and higher. And we're, we're not, we barely have a few of our business owners here to get that input, and it's really important that we do have additional input. So, uh, I will, to, uh, formalize the, formalizing the agenda, uh, to agendaize bringing back the second.
Even if you don't think that are the correct thing, just, you know. Uh, well, with that, I'm gonna return this meeting, uh, we already have started late, uh, but it'll take five minutes to take care of, uh, one device, as well as just a good council, uh, minute, and, or staff, and then we'll be back, and please try to keep it to five minutes, we didn't break your schedule. Special meeting has been adjourned. Special meeting has been adjourned. Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Radio Meeting of November the twelfth, twenty twenty four. Apologize for the delay. We were finishing up a study session. Meeting's been called to order. Roll call please.
Councilmember Alvarez, Councilmember Hamilton. Councilmember Marty Medina. Vice Mayor Salazar. Mayor Rico Medina.
Here. For those that are able to, please rise with me and join me in the pledge. I boil the inches to the water. To the requirement, stands, what is, under God, it is full, can just. For, I'm going to run this not only.
I have no speaker.
We want to item five, I'm going to skip A and B for right at this moment, since we've had two of our chairs patiently waiting. And so first we'll go to receive the annual update from Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And the presenter will be Chair Gaines.
That one's there. Okay. Good evening. Mayor Medina and council members. My name is Matt Gaines. I'm the chair of BPAC San Bruno, presenting our twenty twenty four annual report. Today's agenda will be the BPAC's current committee roster, the following significant achievements BPAC has participated in twenty twenty four, inclusion, representation, the outlook for twenty twenty five. Should we guys have it somewhere you can see it when you're talking? I can see our turn. You guys, okay. Thank you. I'd like to thank my colleagues on the committee, committee members, Cecile Rosarosa, she's our vice chair. Quentin Cufflin, Paul Rose, Nina Stupi, and Matthew Chang Zidler. I'd also like to thank Michael Smith and Harry Yips of the city for always being there and helping out whenever we need. Myself, Rose, and Stupi, we're just reappointed. Thank you for reinstating us. I got sworn in back in today. We do have one open today, we see. Actually, we'll fill that spot in shortly. Okay, significant achievements in twenty twenty four. We provided later support for an active transportation program grant for segment two of the Huntington Bicycle Pedestrian Improvement Project. Make sure all you guys are aware, the project has closed the gap between Centennial Trail through the BART station to the San Bruno Caltrain Station. It's a class four bicycle lane. Class four bicycle lane is a separated roadway for bicycles only. Much safer, if you guys have rode your bike before on Huntington Boulevard, take yourself in your, in your hands there. And most people rode on the sidewalk there. Now we have a designated lane. So thank you. It's, it looks like it's almost done. And that'll take us through Centennial Trail, which is pretty nice. If anyone has rode it lately, South San Francisco has just put in a bike park at the beginning of Centennial Trail, which is basically right behind San Bruno Post Office. If you have kids who like to ride a bicycle, it's a wonderful place. There's a skateboard and bicycle park there now. Other things we had going on was our safe routes to school. We write a letter, a recommendation to C K transportation development, act for grants of safe routes to school. The overall program goal included encouraging and enabling schoolchildren to walk, bicycle, park pool, and utilize transportation in means of getting to school. The facility facilitated achievement of this goal, schools, and supported with the implementation, the project and activities that would decrease traffic congestion around school sites. BPAC also provided input on draft guidelines for pedestrian crosswalk installation. Provided clearly marking minimum of ten foot wide crosswalks at all controlled intersections and at intersections at key streets described in the transportation chapter eight two dash two. Encourage that all crosswalks have ramps and warning stripes that comply with Americans with disability act eighty eight. Thank you for getting the one down the park that was needed. Other specific activity, according to my board, included the committee received a presentation and provided feedback to the M T C project, which closed a three mile gap in the Bay Trail around the San Francisco Airport. The consultant teams are currently drafting a conceptual design and cost estimates for the before route. Anyone notice about the Bay Trail? The Bay Trail is a five hundred mile trail that goes around San Francisco and San Pablo Bay. It goes through forty seven cities and nine counties. Hopefully this will close the gap between South San Francisco and El Grande. There's a study right now, everybody goes to, you go to Bay Trail, you can take the study guide. Hopefully we'll get more people to input on it and get them path we'd like. The largest activity we have here every year is Bike to Anywhere Day. Always happens in the middle of May. We run an Energizer station. We work in conjunction with the Silicon Valley Bike Coalition. We try and promote safe biking to work other than using your car. So we had Energizer stations. We set it at the BART station and Caltrain. We provide snacks, a goodie bag, promote safe routes for riding your bike. BART, those places are usually very well, they give out free BART tickets. They used to, now they don't have tickets anymore. So, but it's a very nice thing. It's our largest outreach every year. We had a Walmart is a helps us every year and supplies us with food and stuff and goodies to hand out. So they're a great contributor. Outlook for twenty twenty five. Continue improvement of walk and bike plan and safe routes to school. That's going to be a big goal for this year to work on coming up. Expand community outreach to children and adults. We'd like to start going back to schools and doing safe biking. That kind of stopped during the pandemic. Schools were closed. Wouldn't let outsiders back on. We'd like to bring that back coming, I mean, here, excuse me. And continue to score back to anywhere case, Catholics. I've attached a couple of pictures. This is what it looks like when we're sitting there. I think we'll show up out of the loop, Shannon. I'd like to thank Council for seeing us and thank my committee members. And we're looking forward for our future with the city. Thank you. Any questions or?
Thank you, Mr. Gaines. Any questions or comments from colleagues, Councilmember?
Thank you for the report. I have one question and then a comment. The for the Bay Trail gap study, did they, when they came to give the presentation, did they, did they ask for your committee to to vote on one of the three options? Or did they ask you all as individuals? Because if you voted as a committee, then I was guessing what you guys thought, but it was all individual.
Everything was done through a survey they did, so we didn't actually pick ours.
Okay.
I mean, of course I have the line warrant. One of the options is going at El Camino. That's not really a gap study.
Yeah, okay, I was, I was curious about it. What, I mean, you have a whole lot of you guys can look at together. That's fair. That's fine. I wanted just to, I thank the committee for their advocacy for the Huntington Avenue side track. It's so, it's so important, not only, as you said, to connect people to the Centennial Trail, the wonderful things that are, that are available there in South City, and also to the new South Line development and, and to connect part with Caltrain. But what I have found as a relatively new bicyclist going all over San Bruno is that the best east, east to west route, or the safest one, is SNE. So being able to get from the rest of San Bruno over to SNE, to be able to head, to be able to head west is, is important. This is the best way to get back. So thank you for, for, thank the committee for, for all their great work, especially through advocacy for that.
Will there questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Gaines. Thank you, committee. I appreciate it. Have a good evening. Item D, receive annual update from the planning commission and to cheer the lots of.
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the council. My name is Marco DuRazzo. And I'm pleased to be here tonight to present the planning commission annual report. Just to kind of go over the agenda tonight, I'm going to provide an overview and policy, policy accomplishments of the commission in twenty twenty four. Mention the projects that the commission reviewed and provide a report cast for next year. So before I continue, I'd like to just simply acknowledge the planning commissioners and those who are currently serving on the commission. The vice chair, Rick Bynsadi, Arlos Harmon, Mary Lou Johnson, was nice enough to be here tonight. Gerald Madden and Thomas Coon. For the policy, policy accomplishments, the planning commission made recommendations to the city council, which were ultimately adopted for planning process amendments, which make the review of most residential additions administrative. There's a long discussion about that and we, we're in alignment with city and, and commission agreement. It was also an administrative hearing process for routine conditional use permits. The adoption of the housing amendment, rezoning of development sites as required by the housing element, and an ordinance adopting housing element policies and updating the A D U ordinance. This ordinance will be coming before the city council next year. With respect to project reviews, as required by the California Environment Quality Act, the commission held E I R scoping meetings for the following projects, Tan Fran redevelopment, Amazon Distribution Center, the E I R students projects were supposed to be released for public review in twenty twenty five. Disrespect to project reviews, the commission reviewed the following commercial projects, Embark Cannabis Store on El Camino Real and outdoor storage and culture for those, and both of these, both of these projects are currently under construction. Disrespect to project reviews, in addition to several small, single family, single family remodeling projects, the commission also reviewed and approved the following residential projects. Highland Ridge at the intersection of Glenview and San Bruno Avenue. This project will have fifty eight townhouse style units. The Crestmore subdivision project includes a hundred and fifty five single family homes in a park site. One eleven San Bruno Avenue, this project includes forty six condominium units along with some ground floor, ground floor commercial space. Looking into the future, twenty twenty five, planning commission hosted review of all land projects, Tan Fran and, and, I don't want to have soul and trouble pronouncing that word. I don't know if it's a E S L thing or what. The Invo subdivision, Michael was helping me this afternoon with that. Amazon Distribution Center. And in addition, the planning commission looks forward to reviewing policy recommendations from staff to further implement the housing element. I'd like to myself, my colleagues, we'd like to thank the city council for the opportunity to serve you on the San Bruno Planning Commission. We have also enjoyed in the course of additional, additional doing study sessions with the city council to discuss planning initiatives that will make the city an even, even better place to live, work, and play in all. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know I have city staff here to support me and respond to this amazing question. Thank you, Chair.
I appreciate it. Any questions or comments from colleagues this time?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. It was a game ball. So I just wanted to, to, to comment first thing to thank you and all the, all the, um, commissioners for your great work. Obviously, we got our, we got our housing element approved and that was, that was a lift from everybody in the organization, but obviously it's got to come through. It has to come through your commission to get to us. And so we greatly appreciate that. And I want to echo your comments regarding the joint, the joint sessions. I have found that the joint sessions between the planning commissioner council to be very, very informative, very efficient, and getting us all on really, really helps to get all the ideas out there and get us, get us in real life and much, much better. So I hope that tradition continues. So thank you very much.
It is market calendars, November the nineteenth, if you're having a joint meeting. Remember at the last one, I said, I think these are very beneficial. And streamlining it for staff sake too, rather than having to go to two bodies. So put us all together, let's go with that. So yes. Sure, we know. So any other questions or comments? If not, Chair, thank you very much to the commission and to your work. You, you sometimes are meeting as much as us, twice a month. Such a review, appreciate it. With that, let's move on back to item A. Please join us for Florida groundbreaking on this Friday, November fifteenth, Travis is guaranteed to bring. Florida groundbreaking on this Friday, November fifteenth, Travis is guaranteed to win. But ten year. And that is, uh, been long and wait, and it is here. Next, we will have a proclamation recognizing November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty four, a small business day, this is something that's done. Not just with our community, but throughout all communities. And so whereas small businesses, uh, Saturday is recognized national, nationwide, providing an opportunity for San Bruno to celebrate its small businesses. And show appreciation for their contributions to the community. And this is looking for November thirtieth, and now therefore I regaling Medina, America, the city of San Bruno can hereby proclaim November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty four, is Small Business Saturday in San Bruno. Urge all residents to recognize and celebrate the invaluable contributions of small businesses to our great culture, economy and prosperity. With that, we will move, um, and I'll say it under my comments, but, uh, big congratulations to Cappuccino's football team. For their winning second and getting a division, division A for the first time in the county's history. So let's move on to item six, consent cap. All items are considered routine or implemented in earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested, there will be one single public comment period for all items in this section unless the council member requests to pull an item for a second vote. Are there any members to pull a separate vote on consent? Anyone for questions, comments on this? If not, any public comment?
I have no speakers.
Bring it back to the board for approval for items six A through six I. Second, here's a motion to second it, uh, to approve consent, all those in papers say aye.
Aye.
Suppose, have it unanimously, move on to item seven. Just trying to speed us up, because you're there for the meeting, folks have been waiting, uh. Public hearing.
Consider adoption of a resolution approving the issuance of the California Municipal Finance Authority exempt facility, facility bonds. For qualified residential rental project in an aggregate principal account amount not to exceed a hundred and sixty million dollars for the purpose of financing or refinancing. The acquisition, construction, improvement and equipping of the three hundred and forty one multi-unit, multi-family units at eight four U San Bruno Avenue.
Thank you very much, and.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, as was described, this is the item for the. For the, uh, tax exempt bonds at eight forty San Bruno Avenue. Um, let's go over the agenda for this item, uh, we're gonna go through the objective and background, uh. Briefly talk about the bonded issuance, uh, provide the staff recommendation. Uh, we do have the applicant present as well as other speakers, so they go to public comment, and then it's recommended that the questions and deliberation and action occur after the public comment. So the objective of this meeting, uh, is to adopt a resolution approving the issuance of tax exempt bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority for the project at eight forty San Bruno Avenue. Project background, uh, the, the developer is. Is, is Gemcore, uh, they own the property and applied to build three hundred and forty one units, uh, on this site. All, all affordable units, and they received planning commission approval in, in November of two thousand and twenty three. This site is on our housing element, uh, we, we put the proposed application into our housing element, so it is. Counting towards our regional housing need, uh, and if this project is built, uh. In combination with other projects that have been under construction, uh, then the city would actually, uh. Exceed our allocation for low income housing, there are some of the other income categories that still have to be met, but it would, it would be. Uh, quite a, uh, uh, positive step if we were able to meet our low income occasion, uh, this early day. Uh, so that brings us to the topic of the bonds, uh. Gemcore has, has requested a hundred and sixty million dollars in tax exempt bonds from the CMFA. Uh, under the Tax Equity and Discourse Policy Act or TFR. A public hearing is required in order to determine if, if the project provides a public benefit to qualify for the tax exempt bonds. Uh, this is the second time, uh. City council has had one of these items, uh, the other was, uh, for seven thirty two Elk, I mean, or real, also an affordable housing project. But the council approved the tax exempt bonds in two thousand and twenty three. As far as impacts normally, fiscal impact and environmental impacts, I'll put on two slides, I. Tried to, tried to convince them in this case, uh, from a fiscal standpoint, uh, there's no fiscal responsibility to the city or the bonds. Uh, sole responsibility of the borrower. Uh, the city does receive a small percentage of the bond as an issuance fee, uh, it's not, it's how the system operates. Uh, so overall, there's not any fiscal impact from this action, um. Environmentally, the project is not considered a project as defined by the California Environmental Quality Act, the project itself has already been approved. Uh, and went through the secret process, uh, this is an action on whether or not, uh, there's a public benefit from, uh, from the project. So recognition is to consider adoption of the resolution, uh, proving the issuance of the bonds. Uh, or to do so, you would have to find that the project does provide a public benefit. And the city received a letter from carpenters union local two seventeen this afternoon. Uh, making a statement that they questioned whether there is a sufficient public benefit being provided. Uh, the applicant or developer is present, uh, and will be able to respond to that. Uh, the staff recommendation is that the provision of the affordable units is a public benefit, and we would recommend approval of the, of the resolution. Uh, based on the tax resolution. As stated, uh, staff recommends the next step, uh, is to take comment from the applicant and then any public comment.
Thank you very much for the report, is the applicant, uh, present? Is there anything that you wanted to state or add?
Uh, nothing to add, just if there's any question, really, that exists, or I don't know what's going.
Okay, uh, as the city clerk checks if there's any, uh, anybody on Zoom, is there any public comments for this item?
Yes.
Could you please come forward? Any public comments, please step to the podium. You'll have three minutes, uh, that we'll sign you, yeah, appreciate you being here and thank you for your patience.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, working council members and CSAT. My name is Nelson Lander and I am representative of Carver's Local Two Seventeen of San Mateo County, current of the area of San Bruno. So we stand over here for approving the bonds tonight for the project at eight forty San Bruno Avenue. I would ask if we could table this item for another meeting till we get some labor standards for protections of workers that will be on this project. The city has discretion to vote no to a temporary hearings when public benefit is in question. I have personally called, sent emails and even sent letters by mail to Gemcore about this project and have been ignored numerous times. The reason why is they don't have any protection for workers on this project and frankly don't appear to care about the labor of City of San Bruno. In the absence of labor standards, workers could be exploited here in San Bruno often daily by local contractors that don't pay living wages, don't get access to healthcare. And don't participate in having apprentices that train workers how to do the job professionally and safely. How is this public benefit to justify response? Is it crazy for the City of San Bruno to let these proceedings, knowing that the project, the project could become opposite of public benefit? I'm here with carpenters that actually live here in the city of San Bruno, they won't be able to work on these contractors, for these contractors, because they can't afford to. They have families, they need healthcare. They need to be paid a living wage to take care of themselves and their families. And they also need jobs for, that are safe for workers by contractors that believe in having properly trained. Especially since Gemcore Construction Partners was recently. Subject to serious OSHA violations that materialize in Delaware, California. So I'm not saying let's not get housing bills. I understand the need for housing is flooded in the Bay Area. All I'm saying is that we can please postpone this item to give the incentive for Gemcore to include contractors to actually believe that workers deserve to be taken care of. Properly instead of being subject to potential exploitations. San Bruno, I thought, is known for a city with heart. Let's not forget about the men and women that wake up every morning to early to complete these projects that are presented for us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, next figure.
Good evening, council, mayor, ladies, gentlemen, my name is Mario Luca, I represent the Compo Companies. Operations manager with Compo, Compo's been around over sixty years. And, uh, we've been syndicate with the unions, all the unions for our work. Um, I myself was in the laborers union and the carpenters union. We're working very closely with Gemco on this project. And it's basically our project to lose with them as far as the subcontract for concrete. This job has over five hundred thousand square feet of concrete elevated eleven floors, five hundred thousand square feet, thirty thousand yards. We have ninety thousand hours into this job, ninety thousand hours, sixty thousand of those who do carpenters. We're syndicated with the carpenters, the labors, the ironworkers, masons, operators, engineers. All of our labor force is syndicated with the unions. We've worked with Gemcore, we just finished a job with them in Blossomville. In San Jose, over two hundred, uh, seventy one units, over a hundred affordable housing. Um, I don't know about. Everybody here, but as far as the operations with Compo, it's been a tough. Couple of, uh, last six months to a year, we are excited about putting people to work, putting the union to work. And having affordable houses for people, uh, it's a beautiful building, Gemcore has committed to us. Uh, they work with the unions with us, we have worked with them, and we're looking forward to those ninety thousand hours being put toward the unions. Putting our men and women back to work and helping supply affordable housing, it's incredible to meet the quota. And to exceed the quota, that was exciting to be a part of. And, uh, just representing Compo and the work here, along with Gemcore, we're excited about this project. Excited about meeting the union requirements, and excited about putting the boys and girls behind us to work, and we are absolutely confident with that, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your, your comments, are there any other speakers?
I apologize, I may have missed the previous speaker's name, Nelson Lander. Okay, I have no other speaker.
And, uh, Director, there isn't, uh, nobody else on the council, also I wanted to try not to exclude any.
We're not able to identify any of the people on Zoom as being available to.
And if, if they're hearing us, they can raise their virtual hands or, uh, probably. Anyway, if, if you see that, you let us know, City Clerk. So, uh, thank you both for your patience tonight and being here for your comments. Now we're going to see if there are questions from colleagues, which we obviously asked speakers, so we may circle back to that. Uh, questions from colleagues on the presentation. And then at this time, all right, let's turn it back for any, uh, commentary, uh, deliberation from colleagues. Do you mean hearing done, uh, let's, let's go ahead and just so we do go through this, let's close public hearing. Uh, can I have action to close public hearing?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I just want a little clarity, so that a number of. Concerns and questions were asked, and we do have a representative from Gemco available to answer. No?
I'm with the CMFA, just note that the public benefit is.
Hold on, hold on. Sorry.
I would just say that the public benefit that we're looking for here is providing affordable housing. And I'm with the CMFA, so if there's any questions related to the financing of the project that you guys have, you can direct those to me.
Is that done?
No, sorry, I'll move the issuer across.
That's okay, I got it.
Okay, um. Director, it did, there were some, uh, statements or comments made, so could you assist to the best of your ability? To those?
Yeah, well, coming to try to summarize all of this, uh. Council is being asked to make a finding that the project is going to provide a public benefit, and the question is. Without what the union speakers said, is it still providing enough public benefit? Or do you think it needs to do more along with what, what the union folks have. Have, have asked for. Uh, from staff's perspective, the provision of affordable housing is a public benefit, and I think all the speakers did say that, it's a question of, is it enough? Alone.
Second, just wanted to address, uh, let's bring it back just to close public hearings.
I mean, I don't, if I can make a comment on, uh, that point, because that's okay before it closes, again, here's, um. Why? I understand the, the points being brought by the, by the, the unions on this, and. The, the issue here is there is an enormous amount of risk if we deny this project. The, we just got our housing element certified and it's true, it's a. Um, and if we, and this project is in our housing element. If we deny this project, HCB could take actions on us almost immediately, including the relocation of our health care. And that would be the disaster for our, for our city. Uh, and, I mean, we, everyone just agreed that this, this project does provide a significant public benefit, and closing our entire, um. Uh, requirement for affordable housing in one project is, um, is a, is a massive benefit, so, um. I just wanted to make that back in that tier, and while I would be, um, supporting this action.
Any other comment?
I sure, yeah, I'll, I'll ask a question, since we got the representatives. CMFA, uh, I would just say, if the council were to decide to delay as was suggested until. Uh, the labor representatives have an opportunity to discuss this, what the developers' intentions are. Uh, would that be seen? By the bond issuer as a, as a negative, or would it, uh, just be in line with us doing the diligence on the project?
I mean, from, from our perspective, the downside of delaying the action is just you're delaying the, the financing of the project, and there are certain deadlines that they have to meet, um. And I think from our perspective, we're just advocating the fact that they are providing public benefits, so they, this, they qualify under the tax, the tax and financing. The separate issue of the, um. What the union is asking for isn't necessarily what we're focused on, we're focused on the public benefit that is provided. Uh, by the affordable housing, in terms of the timeline, um. I can't say whether or not, like, it's our decision to, to view you negatively, but, uh, it does have impacts on the, on the financing of the project.
Thank you. Anything else, Dad? Director? And you don't have that?
Yeah.
Yes, and some.
Mr. Mayor, is there a requirement, uh, for financing that requires the developer to only hire union workers? Uh, when the, the time of construction starts?
Uh, and I don't believe so, so then, yeah, for, for this project, they've been within, um, the legal law, what they have to hire, um, for constructing the project.
May I add, is that a unique question? Well, just working with Gemcore, is that okay, or?
Sure, or no, we have to cover this, we have to close the hearing.
I should answer that.
Yeah, we have closed public hearing, so please go ahead, okay, thank you. So as far as the answers for the union, uh, we understand, uh, that's why Gemcore is working closely with us already. Gemcore is of the mass ex, the shoring, concrete, electrical and plumbing is union. So we represent the concrete, it's eleven floors of concrete. And then it's metal stud framing that goes inside, we have ninety thousand hours, so this job, Gemcore is working toward this job to be mostly union. And they know of Compo, we work with the carpenters very well. We're committed to working with carpenters, VA, the business agents, and whatever that they need, they meet at our office. We get together all the time to make sure that their needs are met, so not just Compo, but also other contractors are signed up. With the unions, the mass ex, shoring, electrical, plumbing, all that, concrete represents ninety thousand hours of it. It's an all concrete structure, so we're advocating and pushing Gemcore, hey, get everybody involved, because the union's the strength, it's everybody working.
Yeah.
So already they have union contractors signed up, and they're working with us on the concrete, which represents over thirty thousand yards. On this particular, uh, project, so we are working for it, I just wanted to add that, thank you for allowing me.
Welcome, this is my appreciate. Let, let's, I've got the director and I've got this gentleman again, let me, let me hear what the director has, and then make the answer, no, 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 let's, first the director.
I, I just want to note that, uh, we have identified one of the members on Zoom as a part of the applicant team, if, if, uh, I have to allow her to speak.
Oh, right, there's a public hearing, so I would say yes, we should allow that to speak. The applicant, so yes to that. I forget, is it, Councilman McGee?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, I was interested, is this typical that the mass ex, the concrete?
the mass ads, the concrete, all of it is kind of approved early and then it's carpenters that are in question most of the time? Is that? That's the question. Is it? Is this normal or is this kind of?
Yes, that is normal. Usually the concrete package is one of the last packages.
The answer we asked for the gentleman's doing back.
It's slow this way, so I like to.
That's a very test.
So yes, usually the concrete package were one of the last packages to get approved. The mass door X starts so much earlier with the soil inspections, everything that needs to happen. So absolutely, they are signed up first. The MEPs, mechanical engineers, plumbers usually signed up. Usually the concrete package is usually the last one because it's one of the largest scopes on the job site. When they sign the concrete package, especially working with us, we're not just concrete. We're carpenters, labors, ironworkers, operators, engineers and masons. So there's a lot of scope that we cover, all syndicate with the unions, so we're usually the last ones to go. So we're working heavily with Gemcore right now. It's our job to lose. I would not be here if it wasn't our job to lose. I would be pressuring them like, hey, if you want me there, it's got to be union. You know, so yes, since ours is the largest contract, we're usually the last ones to be negotiated with. And we're in heavy negotiations with them right now.
Super spare follow.
Is it typical that there is a delay of this last piece? Your piece is the largest piece for the carpenters to kind of be negotiating as work is proceeding or just wanted to, if you could share your experience?
Yes, it's usually typical. The mass ex of the building is set, but the building itself could be in design. There could be openings, elevator shafts, there could be balconies that are be adding. So that's that's our scope of work to be changing. But the whole, the digging, the mass ex, all of that stuff is set. You're not changing the whole, right? So if the building, if we get a sixty percent set of construction drawings or an eighty percent set, it's like, hey, there's a new set that came out with the architect. The engineers want to change something, the fire rating or whatever, we have to relook at that. We said it, we estimate it repricing. So usually our scope, especially on an all-concrete building, the whole is approved, but the design of the building can still be in design. So we're negotiating as far as our scope of work and what we sign up to. So that, you know, usually, yes, this is typical for an all-concrete building our side. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, but no, thank you. I thank you for your time. I don't know.
That's a public hearing. This is what we're supposed to do to listen and to make wise to the best of our decisions, hopefully wise ones. Yeah, Director, who is?
Mr. Nathan Blair of the developer team is is available now.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, can see you, but we can hear you when that's or I mean, the listening to you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time and sorry for the the technical difficulty to to join earlier and sorry to put CMFA on the spot then. So first, I wanted to answer Councilmember Alvarez's important question. Do we have a union labor requirement on this project? Do we have a PLA? Does anything in our financing trigger prevailing wage or any other union labor requirement? The answer to that is no. This is not an SB thirty-five project. We don't have any public subsidy dollars in this that would trigger that. So our involvement with any union labor bidding here is the same as it always is. We want the best people on the job. It's a competitive bid process and groups like Conco have been great to work with. The fact that they are a union signatory to the two seventeen carpenters makes me scratch my head frankly, why we're even having this discussion in the first place when the the very folks that are requesting to have union carpenters on the project have one of their own folks advocating for our project right alongside them. So on on the timing issue, the the question was asked earlier about what happens if this is delayed? I think that was Vice Mayor Salazar. The timeline on this is a very hard deadline. And the Building Department, the Planning Department, Public Works have all been working their tails off to try and help us meet a deadline. The the Director Gilli may be able to to give you a simpler version of this. But essentially, this project lives and dies by its financing. And part of that is a component called a difficult to develop area or a DDA overlay. Essentially, that means a thirty percent increase in our tax credit allocation. So a thirty percent increase in the equity the project has. This project is already struggling mightily to make sense economically. And without that additional equity, the project fails. This area used to have a DDA. It lost its DDA. We were able to preserve it many years ago, but that expires December. I think it's the twelfth or the fifteenth. So in essence, if this gets discontinued or gets continued, we miss a bunch of tight deadlines that are happening. So to answer your question, Vice Mayor, if you deny the tougher tonight, this project will never happen.
Why we have? Were there any questions? Or any ones?
Mr. Mayor, this is, there was an acknowledgement that the union management is working really hard with the developer. Would it be fair to say that there is no need to delay the proposal for tonight?
We're seeing has got to be canceled. Was there anything else, Mr. Mr. Boyer, that you wanted to add or comment on? What we have here?
Not unless you have other questions. I'm happy to answer whatever whatever I can help with.
Stand by in case. Director, anything else from yourself? Was is there anybody else that wanted to offer any public hearing or comments? Seeing once I close it, we will not be opening again. Is there action from council to close public hearing? Move to close the public hearing. Motion in second to close public hearing. All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passage unanimously. Public hearing is now closed. I'm, Mr. Boyer, I think I appreciate it for those that are here, those that spent the night this early. So I'm happy that you guys, everybody get home. But at the same time, too, myself, speaking myself, labor is important. It's important to have them. That's what guys here, that's why we're sitting in here. And it's usually because they have apprentice programs, which are quick and essential. They all work together and they get it done. And they get it done right the first year. And that's what we want. Not everybody's going to be happy with this project. What I mean by that is because of the height and and all of a sudden, but what we do want to do is make sure that what is coming into this community is done right. And so my my encouragement is to continue working those that that delicacy to have the best and do it right. With that, is there any action?
Mr. Mayor, the motion to adopt the resolution is ready, Mr. City Clerk.
Thanks. Motion in second to go ahead and adopt the resolution as read by the city clerk. All those of favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passage unanimously. Thank you again to everybody for being here. Enjoy the rest of your evening. We will move on to item eight, council committee report ads. Do we have any for the ceiling? May? Uh, council, I'm sorry, comments from council papers. Do we have any? The Council on Medina.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's nice to see the council working together and getting things done. And with that, congratulations to our mayor, to our vice mayor on their reelections and to Councilman Hamilton on their election. For that, so.
I want to take a moment to thank the voters for passing measure two. The I know that our city manager was very confident all the way through. He knew, he called it, he was, he called it all the way. I'm laughing. But it was a, it was a huge effort from large number of people on staff. It took that five-oh effort from us here on council. Thank you, Vice Mayor Salazar, for serving with me on the subcommittee that brought it to the voters. It's going to be a huge, it's a huge step in the right direction for our finances and I didn't want that passage to go by. Yes, the votes are still being counted, but it's looking pretty good. Thank you.
Yeah, I also wanted to mention that you're here and also thank the voters for their confidence in us and allowing us to have that, those funds that we urgently need to address a lot of deferred maintenance projects. And so I I know we've been beating the ground for a long time. I'd rather message you sounded that very appreciative of the community putting that confidence in us to do the right thing with their mind. So definitely appreciate it. And thank you, Tom, for your work. In fact, I would say invited the subcommittee together. Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo Vice Mayor Salazar and Councilmember Tom and Hamilton. Going apart for a crowd, I want to thank the voters for passing the measure. And also the subcommittee that by the that our former president Jim Ray for helping us to achieve.
Thank you. Yes, he also did. Continue together. For myself, October twenty-third, Congressman Kevin Nolan was here and toured the first time our Recreation Clinic Center, YouTube. South Line, stopped by Tamperan as well. We've been having and been busy, which is great. October twenty-sixth, the council went to the Rotary Pavilion Ribbon Cutting, which I forget was twenty-seven years to the day, but somewhere about that, that they had dedicated the last. One, and as I mentioned about cat, it they did, I went to their final dinner that they have tradition and they allowed me to speak and try to get geared up for the next day. But also we had Eric Wright there, former forty-nineer player who also spoke to the students. I don't know that they to know, but of course they were educated, chose the video of that important catch with fifty-one seconds left in the tackle that he made. So everybody contributes to the win. And so they played early game and they were successful on the second. So this is their fifth win in the DANS division, but their first win in the A division, which they had never been. So the football team has made history on the field and so it's me a proud lot. With that, I also want to thank everybody else. I want to thank staff. And like I said, Mr. Salazar and Alex for a couple of weeks ago when I had the scare from Vansy and both were about a nice minute ready to step in and be there because there were a lot of activities. And so I appreciate that ability to know that we went on the air and we got through that meeting and we're we're continuing on. So with that, we will go ahead and adjourn to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on November the twenty-sixth. And with that, meeting adjourned. Enjoy your evening. Be safe.